Okay, I'm going to call this city council meeting to order. If you want to speak from the audience, feel free to fill out the speaking card and you just submit it over here in the box. And if you're on Zoom, you just raise your hand, but we'll get that to a little later in the agenda. So we'll begin with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to please announce those two individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Robert Edwards of Set Free Ministry, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Martinez.
Please stand.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Robert from Set Free Church, and I just want to say thank you for the warm welcome the city's given me over the last three years. I've come to lead the church here in Montclair, different departments here. And so I have a verse I want to read with you, and then we'll begin in prayer. It says in Jeremiah, it says, "And you will seek me and find me when you search for me with all your heart." So if we can bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for this assembly of people that come and with a common goal, Lord, is that they love this city and the city that they reside in. Lord, we pray over the concerns and the different things that are going on within the city, Lord, that are going to be brought here today, Lord, that we seek your wisdom, and we seek your discernment, Lord, and finding resolve. And so, Lord, I thank you for this beautiful city of Montclair, for the people that are here. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Before we go to the pledge, I just wanted to say, Pastor Set Free Ministry, I appreciate all the work you guys are doing. I know you guys are helping our code enforcement, the homeless population, you guys are doing cleanups here in Montclair. I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Thank you. Appreciate it. Pledge allegiance. Go ahead.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Lopez, Councilmember Martinez, Councilmember Rue.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Dutre.
Present. Okay, tonight we have two presentations. The first one's an introduction of new police officers. I'm going to ask our chief, our permanent chief now, Jason Reed, could please come up? And then my council colleagues can join me down here at the bottom.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council, members of city staff, city manager, star. Again, it's my pleasure once again to be standing up here introducing one of our new police officers, but not new to us. He brings a lot of experience, which I'll talk about in just one second. So if I may have to the front, Officer Kyle Romero. A little bit about Officer Kyle Romero. Kyle was born in Big Bear, California, in San Bernardino County, and was raised in Los Angeles County. He's married to Jennifer, and he has three children together, two of them which are here tonight with him, and his wife Jennifer is here as well. His professional career began in 2008 when he enlisted into the United States Marine Corps. Officer Romero's primary occupation was infantry, and he served three years on a special assignment with the Department of State, assigned overseas as an embassy marine security guard. Officer Romero completed seven deployments and was honorably discharged as a sergeant in 2017. In 2017, his service did not stop there. Officer Romero enlisted in the California Army National Guard as a sergeant. His prior occupation was counterintelligence special agent and human intelligence collector. He is currently assigned as an intelligence analyst, and Mr. Romero completed two active-duty assignments with the National Guard and is expected to retire from the Army in 2027. In 2018, Officer Romero began his law enforcement career as a police officer with the city of Covina. Officer Romero completed his field training program with that agency and was assigned to patrol. During his employment with the city of Covina, Officer Romero completed detective school, cyber investigations academy, and several post-certified courses. In 2021, Officer Romero decided to have a career change in law enforcement and accepted employment with the Department of Homeland Security as an intelligence officer. During his employment there, he was assigned to the southwest and southeast regions of the United States. His tasks were primarily to identify and analyze all criminal activity with a nexus to the U.S. border, terrorism, financial crimes, money laundering, bulk cash smuggling, commercial fraud, cyber crimes, child exploitation, human trafficking, and human smuggling. That is quite the palette of things that you had to do there. During his employment there, Officer Romero completed several schools to include open-source investigations, online undercover, human trafficking investigations, forensic examinations, and the FBI cyber investigation course. In 2024, we are very thankful that Officer Romero decided to seek out employment here at the Montclair Police Department. He is assigned to patrol currently, and he is undergoing an abbreviated field training program with one of our training officers. In 2021, Officer Romero earned his Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice Administration from National University, and he didn't stop there. He's currently attending National University to obtain a master's degree in forensic science, and is expected to graduate in June of 2024. So he brings to Montclair, as you've heard, a large amount of experience, and we're very grateful to have him out there working on our streets as a member of Montclair. So congratulations, Officer Romero. All right. One more round of applause for Officer Romero. Thank you.
Okay, we'll get to our second presentation, which is, this is the Community Activities Commission Military Banner Presentation. And I noticed that some of the folks who are receiving the banner or obviously leaving the military may be on Zoom, and they may want to say some comments afterwards. So what we'll do right now is I'm going to begin by saying that this is a special presentation of our three military banners to Montclair veterans. At this time, I'd like to invite the chairperson of the Community Activities Commission, Richard Iscolante, to tell us about our honorees. Richard.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, community of Montclair staff. Sixteen years ago, the Community Activities Commissions began sponsoring the military street banner program to recognize the Montclair residents who served in the armed forces. In 2023, a total of 32 military banners and two banners honoring all veterans were proudly displayed throughout the city of Montclair. Tonight, we would like to honor three of the individuals whose banners were displayed during their service and who have recently been honorably discharged. First, we would like to recognize Melanie Anne Feliciano, who served in the Navy from August of 2018 to August of 2023, and served at the Aviation Boats Wayne's Mate Aircraft Handler. Ms. Feliciano was stationed in San Diego, California, and Pensacola, Florida during her four years of service. Ms. Feliciano has been a resident of Montclair for 18 years, attending Buena Vista Arts Integrated School, Vernon Middle School, and graduated from the Montclair High School in 2018. Since her honorable discharge, she is looking to return to school to complete a Bachelor of Science in Marine Biology and work with endangered sea life. Melanie Anne Feliciano is not able to join us this evening in person, but her uncle, Carlos Reyes, will be accepting her military banner. On behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to present to you the banner that was displayed on Holt Boulevard. We thank your niece for her service for our country. Next, we would like to recognize Monique Fedora, who served in the Navy from June of 2003 to June of 2023, and held the rank of Chief Petty Officer. She was stationed in Camp Lejeune, North Carolina, Fort Sam Houston, Texas, Navy Station Everett, Washington, and deployed overseas to finish her services at the Joint Base in Fort Worth, Texas. Ms. Fedora has been a resident of Montclair for over 35 years, attending preschool at the Bethany Baptist, then Montana Vista Elementary, Serrano Middle School, and graduated from Montclair High in 2002. Since her honorable discharge, Ms. Fedora has focused her time and family especially traveling. She is currently in a dual bachelor program at Texas Tech University to pursue a nursing and health information management degree. Due to her college class schedules, Petty Officer Fedora was not able to join us this evening, but the mother, Yvonne Savalo, will be accepting her military banner. On behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to present you with the banner displayed on Central Avenue. We thank your daughter for her service for our country. Congratulations. Third, we would like to recognize Matthew Morosky, who served at the United States Marine Corps from December 12th of 2002 to January 1st of 2023, and held the rank of Major. Mr. Morosky was stationed at Camp Pendleton and 29 Palms in California, Camp Lejeune in North Carolina, and completed three combat tours in Iraq and one combat tour in Afghanistan. During his services, Morosky received the Maturus Service Medal, three Navy and Marine Corps accommodation medals with two valor devices. Other awards he has received include the Armored Accommodation Medal, Joint Maturus Unit Awards, Iraq Campaign Medal, and the Afghanistan Campaign Medal. Mr. Morosky has been a resident of Montclair for 18 years. Since his honorable discharge, Mr. Morosky has been deployed as a facility manager with the Riverside County Fire Department, coordinating the maintenance and construction for over 40 facilities in Riverside County. Mr. Morosky. On behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to present you with your banner that was displayed on Central Avenue. We thank you for your service to our country. On behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to thank each and every one of you for the service to our country. Mayor Dutre, that concludes our presentation.
Well, thank you very much. Do we have anybody? Andrea? One of the two, or both?
Let me pull them up on Zoom. Okay, so I think one was, the first one, Melanie Feliciano. I believe that I have Feliciano family on here on Zoom. Melanie, did you want to speak?
Melanie, did you want to say something, Melanie?
Hello?
Go ahead, Melanie, we can hear you.
Yes, this is Melanie's mom speaking.
Go ahead, mom.
Yes, we just want to say that we were very proud residents of the city of Montclair for 18 years. We're now in Northern California, but we really miss you guys, our kids. Our three daughters were born, went to school there, and I worked for the Ontario Montclair School District, and we're very proud to have been a part of your community, and we are very grateful for you continuing to run an amazing city.
Well, thank you very much, and tell your daughter thank you for her service.
Thank you.
One more?
Okay, yes, and our next one is Monique Fedora.
Okay, Monique. Hello, Monique?
Monique.
Yes.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, I just want, Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor, to the council members, and to the Communities Activity Commission. This is such a great program. I unfortunately didn't get to spend a lot of time traveling back to California, but every time I did travel back, I would always jump out of the car, try to take a picture with my, and show off to my kids, show the banner to them. So I only got a few chances to actually do that. However, you don't realize how important this program is to our family members, and I want to say thank you for allowing the opportunity for my mom to accept the banner, because she was the one that was constantly asking me to fill out the form, to send in proof of my service, and she was the one that was sitting on top of this because she was probably more proud of this banner, just seeing it every single day. So thank you to Montclair City Council, to the Activities Commission for just doing this program, because I don't think it's special to us, the service members, but I don't think the impact that it necessarily has on the family. So thank you again.
Well, thank you, Monique, and thank you for your service to our great country. Chairperson Iscolante, thank you for your presentation this evening, and we want to again thank all of our veterans honored this evening, and of course, any other veterans serve our country. We live in a great country, and because of your sacrifice, you've made even better. So with that, we conclude the presentations, and this would be a good opportunity. If you wish to leave, you can leave now. If you want to stay and learn about electrical fences and maybe get shocked a little bit, here's an opportunity. Thank you.
Yeah?
Zero point zero.
Anything? I know they have interviews. Yes, they have second interviews. Last.
All right, you got a minute, run. Okay, all right, so now we have public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak at the council. You have five minutes. If you want to discuss an item on the consent calendar, we'll do it under public comments. If you want to discuss any other items that aren't on the agenda that's related to city business, this is an opportunity to speak as well. Again, you have five minutes. Again, if it's not on the agenda, the city council, I can't really talk about it per the Brown Act. So if you're in the audience, you want to fill out the speaker's card, you can fill that out and submit it over here. If you're on Zoom, you raise the raise hand feature on Zoom, request to speak. And I think you're on the phone, you just hit star nine. So I'm going to ask the city clerk to see if she has any speakers.
Yes, our first speaker is Bill Kaufman.
Mayor, City Council, it's a pleasure seeing you in the year 2024. I missed our last meeting. I won't be along with you. We have a meeting, myself and my partner Herman Jensen and one other, with the city of Laguna Woods, which is a large retirement community in Laguna. We're discussing and going to hopefully come to an agreement on opening a health center in Laguna Woods. It won't be your typical marijuana dispensary. It'll be an institution where seniors can go and seek various health remedies. Fifty percent of it will be cannabis, and cannabis happens to be hemp and marijuana. The other side of it is going to be herbs, and will be manned by herbalists. So when an individual comes in, they will be educated on what's available, not sold. We won't be in business to sell, we'll be in business to educate. We'll have both sections, and that's why we call our pharmacy plus, and we will have weekly educational seminars with speakers and so forth. That being said, we still have the premium location on Central Avenue above Sioux City that we can do the same type of thing for the city of Montclair. We want to make this, try to separate slightly from what people are considering marijuana dispensaries into health centers, where seniors and other people, I'm talking seniors because Laguna Woods, can go in and explain to highly educated individuals what their ailments are and what we may have to assist them with those ailments. I will probably, after tomorrow's meeting, have, or our next meeting, have a much more clear example and maybe even a few drawings of what we will have. But again, we're trying to separate the old concept of a marijuana dispensary with a health center that can deal with children, one, two years old, up to, in our last clinic we had, we have a 103-year-old man. And for your reference, myself, my partner, and Herman Jensen, we have extensive, extensive years of experience and have run over 117 different health dispensaries, not only in the United States, Canada, Europe, Israel, and we wanted to bring all of that knowledge, but bring it in a new format to the city of Montclair. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is speaking on a consent calendar item. On item B9 is Bruce Colt.
Okay, Bruce. And just to let everybody know, regarding public hearing items, that'll be dealt with definitely for comments regarding the public hearing item. Okay, Bruce?
This is item B9 regarding the matters of Garcia Fuentes versus Lopez and the expenditures related to those in litigation and settlement. So I was hoping Officer Romero would have still been here, he could have made his first arrest for the money that Ben Lopez has been stealing from the taxpayers in the tune of almost close to a million dollars. Money that could have been gone to parks, safe routes to schools, stop signs, speed bumps, more police officers, more fire equipment. Those are the kinds of things that this money has been used in the litigation and court costs involving his sexual harassment and discrimination against two city employees. These are city employees and fellow employees of the police and fire departments, and his involvement in that affects them as well. So I just can't believe that our city is having to go out and pay this. In addition, he's failed to go to the required sexual harassment training classes. He's basically snubbing his nose at the city and our taxpayers so that he can continue sitting up here on this dais while these employees have to endure his presence all the time. You know, most people who've been sexually harassed, their management will fire that employee, and they won't have to go through any more humiliation, but these employees still have to endure the humiliation of having somebody in their presence that continues to bully, intimidate, harass them through his actions of being present during these council meetings and on a daily basis. They have to see his picture up on a wall and know that that man did what he did to these employees. I just can't believe that you won't resign immediately and save the taxpayers more money. So I would ask that the city, these are only just a portion of the cost. I mean, we have every member of the senior management team in our city, human resources people, city managers, information technology. These are not, if you look at the payroll portion here at the end of the agenda, they sure aren't being paid minimum wage, all right? They're spending hours dealing with this week after week, time after time, meeting with our attorney, who's probably not charging, you know, doing this for free. So we have more money being spent, and how long will it last? Well, hopefully not long. You know, our election is coming up, we need to make sure that our voters understand what's happening here. I'm finally glad that you guys listened to me and put this on the agenda. I've been trying to get this done for over a year, and finally, I see that the staff, thank you, have listened to me and put this out here for the people, for the residents of the city of Montclair, to see what the damage is, and it's not over yet. So I ask that you just keep this in mind. I wish our city council would speak more on it and oppose this. I hope our city fire department and police departments recognize the harm that he's doing to those departments and do not further advance his council member expenditure funding so that it's the, you know, you guys have a wonderful reputation throughout the city. Everybody loves you, but you know, that, supporting his candidacy would be a stain on both the police and fire departments. So I ask that you guys do not fund any more of his campaigns, and that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and the next Xavier Mendez would like to speak on two consent calendar items, on B11 and C3.
All right, well, greetings, Mayor Dutre, City Council, City Manager Star, city staff in the community. My name is Xavier Mendez. I'm a lifelong resident of this great city of Montclair, a past employee of 29 years, and currently appointed to the planning commission for the city of Montclair. Montclair. I'd also like to say welcome to the new police officer that Jason introduced, and also congratulations, Jason, for finally becoming officially the chief of police of Montclair, which we are very happy to have you here. I've known him since he was a cadet. And look at that, here he is, chief of police. So it's a good, yeah, it's a long time.
A dad or as a kid?
You know, it's, it's a great thing, what Montclair does a lot is, you know, bring people up through the ranks, and it just shows, you know, what this city is all about. So appreciate that, Ed, I know that's a lot of you, so. Also like to say thank you to all the military persons that were honored today, you know, displaying their military banner, that's a great thing. Thank you Community Activities Commission and Human Services Division, Marcia. I know a lot of that work is on you. I'm here today to talk about a couple of items on the agenda, share my opinion based on my knowledge, my experience and my love of this city and my professional life. On the consent calendar, B11, 2223 compliance report for state mandated annual fire inspections in city of Montclair. It's just, it's great to see that the city of Montclair has completed the required amount of inspections, you know, that the California Health and Safety Code requires, so it's nice to see that, and even better to see that we're going to be completing 100% of the rest of the properties. I know that Mike Dorsey will do a great job seeing that through. Agreement, section C3 agreement with Red Dot Industrial Park next to the Reader Ranch Park regarding the common wall, just like to make sure that when you put this agreement through, that it goes to title where it's recorded, document, to where if somebody else buys that property, that it'll go onto them for them to have to make sure that the agreement stays, you know, with that property if somebody else takes it over. But other than that, just want to say happy new year and thank you guys very much, and thanks for doing a great job.
Well, thank you.
Rest of the comments are for public hearing item.
Okay, then we'll go right to the public hearing. I'm going to open up this public hearing to consider adoption board, it's number 24-1005. This is regarding electrical security fences, and then we'll have the staff report, and I'm not sure who's doing it. Ed?
Actually, our community development director, Michael Diaz, has a PowerPoint that he would like to present to the city council.
I got it. Good evening, Mayor Dutre and fellow council members and city staff and all those in attendance tonight. The city council has requested to consider amending the Minnesota Code to allow monitored electrified security fences in specified areas, industrial and commercial areas within the city. If approved, the proposed ordinance would establish local regulations regarding the use of these systems and provide a means for some businesses or property uses to employ this as a supplemental measure to address persistent issues with crime and vandalism and trespassing. So that's the, basically the request for you tonight. And what I wanted to do with the, with the PowerPoint is to make all of the black and white type that you see on your, in your report, a little less, a little even more interesting to, to understand and review. Okay, thank you, sorry. Hopefully everybody heard me. All right, so, all right, so what's, is an electrified security fencing system? This is a full perimeter electrical fence system that is designed to deter criminal activity and protect assets using a non-lethal 7,000-volt electrical shock when touched or tampered with. The best systems are monitored third-party systems, and they include video surveillance, additional lighting in support of that operation. The monitoring party in the system would detect the breach and then verify whether the local authorities need to be notified for, to respond to any kinds of verified criminal activity. The electrified security fence is intended to supplement the existing security measures on the property when traditional security measures have not been effective. So this is not the primary intent for them to use this as the primary and only use for security of the property. This is a supplemental measure that they could take if they can meet the criteria of the ordinance. And I, and one of the things, we'll see a picture of this in a minute, is that the ordinance, as well as state law, requires the installation of bright warning signs that would notify individuals of an impending shock if they made contact with the wires. We'll get into that in a little minute. The elements of an electrified security fence, first of all, it's a physical thing. It's a barrier that consists of relatively thin gage galvanized wires that run horizontal and are supported by regularly supported vertical poles. These would be placed behind an existing six-foot-high fence or wall, so like I said earlier, they're not intended to be the primary means for protecting a site. The power source comes from a 12-volt DC battery. This is similar to, what I understand is a car battery, that would be then continuously charged by, by means of a solar energy panel. No part of this system that's being considered is connected to the electrical grids, so there's no continuous current that's running through the system at any time. So these are just pulse, pulse shocks when the wires are engaged. Shock, if a breach occurs, the electrical fence delivers the 7,000-volt non-lethal shock to the trespasser, and the activation of the electrified fence would occur then only after, this activation of the electrified fence would only be during off or closed business, after one hour, the businesses are closed, so during the evenings when there's nobody on site. So during the day, they would not be activated, and there wouldn't be any danger of shock. The other part of this is there's alarms and lights that are part of the system so that any attempt to scale or breach the fence triggers the alarm, turns on bright lights, might have a speaker that warns somebody to, to stay away or to go away. But when activated, the system then goes into alarm mode and it notifies the monitoring operator like a, like a regular alarm system would do for a business right now that is in currently operation. As I mentioned earlier, signs are required that would give you notice of the, of the electric, electrified security fence in place. The minimum that state requires is English and Spanish and two-sided signs so that both sides of the, somebody on both sides of the fence can see what, what's in front of them. The intervals for these fences are just not once, you know, every, occasionally where you want to do it, they're regular 30-foot intervals that are required, so this is a consistent and hopefully enough notice to anybody who gets near the fence. And then installation, these are electrified security fence systems that are being constructed and operated in conformance to specifications outlined in international electro-technical commission standards. So this is not something like, somebody mentioned MacGyver earlier, like you can't put this together by looking at a Mother Jones magazine or Popular Mechanics. You have to go and actually get a system that is certified for use for these particular purposes. So this is not for casual installations. So what types of business employ electrified security fencing systems? The typical users are companies or uses with outside storage. Usually these things, these items that they're stored outside are high-value items or parts. Sometimes they're construction equipment, they're building materials, fleet vehicles, et cetera. These are things you can't really always put into a building just because of their size and the ability to get things in and out of these things. So you've seen storage, construction facility sites around even our city and a bunch of other communities where you can go rent these machines and things. Typically, those are the kinds of items that have some high value for not only just the casual person who's coming by, but people who are part of criminal rings that just do this for a living. So those are the primary users. Sometimes utility companies might utilize some of these in cases because of their remoteness and distance away from anybody who can easily see these things where they're located. That's what I, that's my second point here. Usually these areas are out of direct view from the street. Some of the properties that are kind of key areas where they have a lot of problems are those that are not directly out of view, they're maybe remote, or sometimes they're surrounded by unusual physical characteristics such as the rail corridors or bridges or other areas where your typical security measures, walls or fences, alarms, video, video surveillance, et cetera, have been ineffective, ineffective in preventing criminal activity. In Montclair, existing rental businesses and other industrial businesses along the south side of Brook Street have, are, that these businesses and properties directly abut the Union Pacific area have been areas that have experienced a number of criminal activities and difficulties with securing their properties. So all those, these fences have, I mean, these businesses and properties have existing fences, as well as they've experienced consistent problems with thieves and loss of inventory. This is a picture is an example of some of the items or kind of activity, breaches that you see in the, on some of those properties on the south side. You can see in the first picture on the left where the, the fence that was, probably had more up and down vertical parts are missing. You can see that there's even razor wire there that's not deterred anybody in that picture. And usually, a lot of the, the people who, who commit these kinds of crimes have battery-operated saws and other kinds of, of things that they don't need electrical plugs, and gives them some sort of ability to, to quickly, sometimes in some cases, get through the existing fences and walls that are there. The picture on the right, it also exhibits the same thing, there's a fence there that's been breached, it has razor wire, it has barbed wire, and they were still, at least in this case, they didn't get too far with this particular thing, but they were really getting ready to take a bigger piece of equipment off-site. This is a picture of the system we described earlier that typifies an installation behind a decorative-type fence. So this, you can see is a sort of a metal tube fence. It may be six feet high, might be a little higher. This is a fence that's in line with a building that meets a setback. So there's distance between the front of that fence to wherever the sidewalk is to in your, on the left side of your picture. In this particular photograph, you see the solar system that energizes the battery, and you can see the wires there, in this case, a little higher than what we would propose in our particular ordinance, because our, our ordinance limits it to two feet above the existing six-foot-high fence or wall that's there. So it might be a little, couple lines, horizontal lines shorter in this particular instance, if this was in our city. The next picture is also, has an electric fence behind the metal fence that you see that, here you have a setback that meets the, the district standard for where it is. I'm not sure what this is, but that's what a setback would look like with landscaping, a decorative fence. You can see the materials that are behind the fence, and on the left side of this picture, you can see the sign. And then you can see another sign to the, to the right a little bit, it's in the, it's in the front of the yellow truck there. And those signs would be continuous throughout the length of this particular frontage. But this is another example of one with a fence, a decorative fence. In this particular picture on the left, you can see what the fence would look like behind an existing solid wall. Again, presumably at a permitted location for the wall, and behind it is where this particular system lies, and you can see the sign in the circle that indicates that location. This is probably a six-foot-high wall, maybe a little bit taller, but it's, and it's even harder to see sometimes through the sky, but the signs there are there for. So this solves an aesthetic issue, but the signs also help you to identify that there's something there behind that in this particular case. The one on the right is an example of what would be a chain-link fence that might secure property. You can see it already has some barbed wire across the top, but this is one we're not looking at recommending for approval through this ordinance because we want a solid wall or a decorative fence in the foreground to minimize the, the impact of what this might look like to the general public for an aesthetic reason, but it also gives you more of a visual deterrent in front of this sign so that you are, so you just don't run into this like you would if it was just the primary means of securing a site. This is an example of the required warning signs. This is black and white, highly visible, easy to read back. It's two-sided. You can see through the sign that if you're on the other side of the fence looking towards the picture from the back, the same message is on the other side, and that's required as well. It's in English and is in Spanish. And again, I don't know what's in front of this, but this would be an example of the sign, is what I'm trying to show you here. The proposed locations for the use of an electrified security fence would be in industrial zones throughout the city if they can meet, again, the criteria that's in this, specifically identified in the ordinance, and some commercial zones that might be abutting the I-10 freeway corridor at this point. They have to also meet the, those particular requirements in there, so those are potential areas. Not every property will probably be able to make that, ability to meet all those requirements and then thereby get a permit for it. So we'll look at this on a case-by-case basis for the zones that are, would be allowed. There might be other specified zones and areas or uses in other zones that could qualify under the ordinance, like these outstretched storage areas, maybe parking lot structures, mini storage facilities typically have a lot of vandalism and break-ins. And if, and a lot of them are in commercial and/or industrial zones, so they could probably qualify as well if they choose and they deem that it's necessary to advance the protective measures for their particular site. Prohibit areas, and this is important for everybody to understand, that the state, as well as our ordinance and every other ordinance that's approved in the state, doesn't allow these in residential zones. So you can't come in and say, you don't like your neighbor and you want to put it up in, in a residential context, that's automatically, and anything we find that people do, they're all illegal, they'd be illegal and they'd be required to be removed. Parks and adjacent properties, especially if their properties are adjacent to residential uses, would be a prohibited area. Mixed-use zones that we have, and those are particular, so this is a little redundant because the next one is specific ones, and that's where we have our current mixed-use zones right now. So within these two specific plans, North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan and the Montclair Place District Specific Plans, they wouldn't be allowed at all. So, because it's, the, the benefit of the doubt is that if it's mixed-use, residential can be in there, so this is not the place where you can use these things. And so, and by the way, none of these, these two specific plans don't even have industrial zones anyway in it, so they, we're not approving them any longer for, for their use in those, in those locations. So the way you would get a permit would be an administrative permit. So this would be the zoning side of things, not the building permits, but the zoning side of things, where we would review each request on a case-by-case basis, and they would require the approval of administrative permit. We already have that in the, in the code right now, we just, we're modifying the code just slightly to add electrified fences, security fences, as one of the things that we would review under this particular permit. And just because somebody applies doesn't mean they get an automatic approval. They still have to demonstrate that they need it and that they can qualify for all the, the standards that are, are within this, the proposed code amendment. The AP process offers an easier path for the city to work to revoke permits or failure, for failure to comply with the requirements of the ordinance. Or in the case of someone, a company that doesn't need this moves away, it doesn't automatically transfer to the, the new business, they would have to be updated at, at least on one hand, or eliminated or removed because the business doesn't have the same kind of characteristics or needs. Maybe you redevelop the site and you put in a bigger wall, and this isn't a necessary issue, but that would be one way that we'd have to look at each case on a, each request on a case-by-case basis. We toyed with, just as you know, we toyed with the idea of a CUP, but the CUP runs with the land in perpetuity, and it's a much harder process to eliminate if for some reason you need to get rid of it, whether it's through neglect of the, of the property owners to maintain the system or, or the system just goes away. Because the CUP runs with the land, it's always there, and so we chose to do that. In checking with other cities, most other cities don't even allow, do this with CUPs either. They have some administrative permit process in which they do that. They might approve it under a CUP if it's, the whole project itself requires CP, so it's a component of that particular project. But, so AP's a lot easier to work with, and it's, I think, a, a good, good way to go. As part of the, the review process, the As part of the review process, the party that's requesting approval to install the monitor system is required to demonstrate the need for it, show why all of the other reasons that they can give us, whether it's crime stats or some other unusual circumstances, that they need this as a supplemental measure to bolster the existing security measures that are already on the property. So, again, this is not intended to be the primary means for securing a property, but it's a supplemental means for enhancing what is already there. So if you don't have a fence, you can't come in and ask for an electrified fence, because you haven't really fulfilled the minimal requirements for securing your property in a normal way that other people would do. In granting the AP, or this administrative permit for the use of the modified or monitored electrified security fence system, the director, that's me at this case, and the future director or a staff member that's assigned it, would be able to require additional conditions than those that are required, the provisions to, and the intent here would be to enhance or to also to help protect the health and safety of the general public and the property values in the area. So whether it's an aesthetic issue, or there's maybe something else that needs to be done, maybe some landscaping needs to be replaced in the front, maybe the wall needs to be fixed or replaced or added, those are all conditions that we could add to the granting of the approval. So we've written that into the specific ordinance so that we have some, again, some little more teeth to be able to make sure that this is something that can be appropriately done and appropriately installed on a property. That concludes the general summary of what's in your staff report and the ordinance. I'm here to answer any questions you might have that. We have the representative from the company, Amrock, who can explain their system in this particular case. And I should point out, by approving this ordinance, you're not approving exclusive use by their own company. So any other company that can meet the requirements of this particular ordinance and would be able to apply for a permit through the property owners, obviously. And so it's not an exclusive license for only one company to do this kind of work in our town. I have the building official to ask, answer any questions you have about the building permit process, and we might have a couple of owners, or at least one owner from a property.
Let's do this. We're going to take a five-minute break until Councilmember Lopez returns, so we'll stop for about five minutes.
Okay.
And then we'll go from there.
Right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to get back to order. And we left off with staff finishing presentation. I know we have some members and staff in the audience to answer questions. Also, there's a company representative, a representative of a company that specializes in electric fences, alls in the audience if there's any questions. So what we do is we'll begin with a public hearing. I know we have some members of the public that wish to speak, so we'll start with that, and then we'll bring back the council for questions and comments. So go ahead, Andrea.
Okay, first, we have Joanna Luthman.
Joanna. And Joanna, I just want to say that I understand there was an incident at your property over the weekend. Police Chief Reed informed me about it and gave some detail and really started, happened to you, so.
Yes.
It's very disturbing.
Unfortunately. Well, thank you all for giving us the opportunity to voice our concerns. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Joanna Luthman. I represent a small distributing company of fine cookware on Brook Street. This is the third time that I presented myself with our similar concerns, and I would wish that I was bringing better news. It is good, because as Mayor Detry mentioned, two individuals were arrested this Sunday. They were caught red-handed stealing property. Unfortunately, it's a small win for all the trouble that they've caused, being that these criminals have continued to break, steal, destroy, and damage our property. And I just, I want to make it quick and simple, so I just brought a quick breakdown of the time and money spent on repairing and replacing the items damaged from the thieves just this past 2023. I didn't even include 22. So May, we had to pay $500 to repair and replace two glass windows. May as well, $560 to repair a garage roll-up door. In July, $1,400 to repair a front door and replace three glass windows. In August, $500 to repair and replace two glass windows. August, we also had to pay $9,000 for the installation of a wrought iron fence and doors, on our doors and windows, surrounding the whole building and perimeter in order to deter. We thought it was a preventative measure. It helped with the burglaries. Unfortunately, they still continue to come. In September, we were hit again, and this time we, they damaged the garage doors irreplaceably, so we had to repair and replace them, totaling $18,000 on just that job. So as you can see, this past year, we incurred $30,000 of replacements and repairs on our building and our land. Unfortunately, as Mayor Detry mentioned, this Sunday, we were also hit again. They ruined the roll-up door once again, so we're trying to see if we can get it fixed. If not, we'll have to go the repair, I mean, the replacement route again for another $18,000. Hopefully, we get a discount. You know, it's very heartbreaking, because we're very happy with the city. You know, business is really good for us. We enjoy the area, not so much at night. And I was speaking with Chief Reed a little while ago, and we were just discussing how, unfortunately, that area, because of the train tracks, it does create a harboring area for vandals, criminals, you know, just that are up to no good. And sometimes, as we noticed, that they were just breaking the windows just to do it. It wasn't even a matter of they were trying to break in, they were just doing it just because it was fun. And, you know, we believe that maybe if you permit the electric fencing, this would increase some, you know, maybe a sense of security for us, and maybe it'll deter the vandals from trying to come in and break in, because, you know, they'll have a hard time coming in. So we are very happy, and I was very happy that Councilman Ben Lopez reached out to me today to let me know, because I had not planned on coming to the meeting until he notified me. So I thank you for that. We appreciate all the work that you guys are doing, and we do stand behind this, and hopefully it does get approved, because it would be very helpful to us, as you can see. You know, we, we really need the help. So thank you, and I appreciate the time that you've given me.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm sorry that this has happened to you several times.
Okay, and our next speaker is Bruce Kulp.
Hi there. Before I speak, I just wanted to say, you know, I understand the plights of the business owners out here, and, you know, I, I think, you know, trying to deter crime is a high priority within our city, and I really feel for your losses, and I think that, you know, we all need to do more to prevent crime and things like that. My main beef is just electric fences in general as a public policy, so that's where I'm going to be coming from. And so my opposition really comes to more of this, how the city and their, you know, as a public policy of allowing electric fences and the city, and more of a moral issue. So I wrote a note when I saw this public item out for, out for public comment. And basically, I'll just read it aloud. I know you may have all received a copy of this, but basically said, "I'm opposed to the ordinance 241005 allowing electric fences in the city of Montclair. I believe the city, possible and eventual harm from electric fences outweigh any small benefit, if any. It is mentioned that electric shock will not be fatal. However, you do not know the health of everyone who comes in contact with these fences. Someone with poor health and issues where the heart could be killed. From, from my personal perspective, it's a form of torture, intentionally electrocuting humans and other animals or pets that would come into contact. Our city should not condone this type of torture, simply to protect property. There are many other ways to protect properties, along the affected areas where these fences are being proposed. More police presence, security guards, alarm systems, video surveillance systems." And I know those are all expensive items and they would, you know, add to the cost, but these are measures that can be implemented in concert with each other, rather than intensely electrocuting and causing possible great bodily harm, someone who come into contact with these fences. There's a lot of mention of warnings and monitoring. It sounds like that's going to add additional staff to monitor these things, three or four people. When they are being monitored, people go on breaks, people go on lunch, people go on vacation, people call in sick. How's the monitoring going to occur during those times? Is it going to be somebody to follow up? Is it going to be unmonitored during those times and still electrified? The signs up there, many people can't read at all, or they have a different reading ability than English or Spanish. Monitoring won't prevent electrocution, it'll just watch the person getting electrocuted. Okay? There's so many different scenarios that could come, where people come unintentionally in contact with these electrical fences. People just jumping over the fence to, a ball goes over the fence and somebody climbs the fence to try to catch it and gets electrocuted. There's many other different things. We see all the time where safety is top priorities. There was an incident on United Airlines just a while ago, where a door that's probably been tested three or 400 times with bolts that were to prevent a depressurization of a, an airplane. How could that possibly happen? And yet it did. These things will happen. People will unintentionally come into contact with these electric fences, and what are the results going to be? So, those are my, and just as a, as a moral standard from a, from a public, you know, public entity, I don't think we need to be in the business as a city in condoning the use of electrocuting other people and animals that might come into contact, things like that. So, a few things I noticed as I was reading through here. I mentioned the monitoring, that seems to be a concern of mine. I don't know if it's going to be monitored all the time, how are we going to prevent people from just walking in and leaving their post during this monitoring period? And monitoring does not prevent electric shock, it just, it allows them to notice that somebody is getting shocked. Let's see. I noticed the types of cities that do allow it, Ontario, Colton, Fontana, Rialto, Riverside, San Bernardino. I feel our city's better than that. We are a city that has higher moral standards than, than electrocution of unsuspecting people that might come into contact with this. Okay? They keep talking about it being non-lethal and not harmful, yet the city's going to indemnify themselves harmless from what it says here, any proceeds of personal injury, including death. So there's a possibility of death occurring because you guys are holding this, wanting the city to be held harmless from death. Why would you need that in there if it's going to be a harmless shock? Notice it's going to be paid for by the applicant. Got a little issue with paying for votes, but I won't go into that too much. And then, it's going to be not placed in North Montclair and some of the higher-income portions of, of Montclair, in the North Montclair area. So it's going to be in the poorer districts, so people that will probably more come into, affected by this, and possibly unintentionally shocked, will be people with lower incomes and lower means and minorities. So those are my oppositions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I know Carolyn's been raising her hand on Zoom for a while. Carolyn Raft?
Carolyn Raft, you there? You have to unmute yourself, Carolyn, if you wish to speak. You need to unmute your mic, Carolyn. You're still muted? You're still muted? Looks like maybe she doesn't want to speak. Nope, still muted, so we'll, all right, we'll move on then.
All right. And then we have the Amrock Luis Farias.
Hello, sir.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, staff, and the public. As you may remember, my name is Luis Farias, and I work for Amrock, the ultimate premier security company. I'm here tonight with others to thank you for the work you have undertaken to grant local businesses access to the tools they need to protect their assets and the lives of their employees at a time when crime is rising, not just in the region, but throughout the state and our nation, unfortunately. First, I want to thank you, Mayor Javier, for recognizing the value that longtime businesses like Stotz Equipment and United Rentals create for the city of Montclair. Back in June, one of our local customers, Joe Monteleone, who's here tonight, addressed you and the council about his experience with crime, business losses, the threat to lives, and the exhaustion of all other security measures as they look for ways to protect themselves. Back then, you as the city manager, the chief of police, and Mr. Michael Diaz, to meet with our customers to find a path forward. Well, I'm happy to report that the city staff have done an incredible job to help allow businesses avail themselves of the crime deterrence technology our comprehensive system offers. During meetings with Mr. Diaz, the police, building officials, and others from the city, our customers made it abundantly clear that they are looking for innovative, safe, efficient, and cost-effective ways to protect their employees and assets against criminals. Our monitor electrified security system meets those needs. Even PD agree with our business owners that the technology is something they would use if they were business owners themselves. During our meetings, we also talked about how our product is helpful to law enforcement at a time when resources can be spread thin. Following the meetings, Mr. Diaz and the city drafted an ordinance to support the installation of electrified security fencing behind an existing perimeter, in compliance with California Civil Code A35. The planning commission voted unanimously to approve the ordinance with minor changes back in November. Our customers are grateful for this, and we appreciate all the work that has made this possible. Our technology is not new, it is medically safe. In fact, the world's foremost biomedical experts have deemed it safe. So this solution is a fully appropriate response to the rising crime today. We follow state law and the International Elektrotechnical Commission's safety standard, IEC 60335-2-76 and other standards. Due to the effectiveness of our technology and customer demand, we now have more than 1,000 installations in California alone, and more than 6,000 installations nationwide. Regionally, the following already allow this alarm monitoring technology. Baldwin Park, Colton, Chino, City of Industry, Eastville, Norco, Ontario, Rialto, Riverside, San Bernardino, and San Bernardino County. They are allowing businesses to protect themselves, and that's a public safety moral that we really ought to follow. Our customers greatly appreciate Montclair's public safety leadership, and can now start to turn their attention, hopefully, towards running and growing their businesses here, leading to more local jobs and revenues for the city. The bottom line is that rising crime is not going away anytime soon, because the criminals are not going away. Solutions like this proposed ordinance before you tonight are desperately needed. Therefore, we urge to vote of allowing monitor electrified security fences in Montclair. This is a vote in support of local businesses, jobs, and public safety, and more importantly, a vote against criminals that pose a threat to our communities. Thank you for your time, and have a great evening and a great year.
Thank you.
I'll seat the floor if it's okay to Joe, our customer, if you have any questions, and then Keith Kenecko can provide answers to any technical questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Do either of you still want to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, so Joe Monteleone?
Evening. Again, I'm Joe Monteleone, I represent Stotz Equipment. We've been part of Montclair for well over 40 years, I believe. First off, I would like to thank Chief Reed and the Montclair Police Department for being responsive and very communicative with us. responsive and very communicative with us. They've been great to work with. I'd also like to thank the employees here at the city and the different committees we've dealt with since I've appeared before you. And lastly, I'd like to thank you're the council and the mayor for your leadership. I really appreciate it. Again, the reason I'm here tonight is we keep getting broken into, to the tune of about $150,000 over the past three years. It's not small dollar stuff, and more importantly, I'm concerned about the safety of my employees who come in late at night. We load up trucks, you know, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning so we can be at customers over in LA by 6:00 AM. So, I'm concerned about them and their concern for their safety. We've had, we still have, I think we've got 14 video cameras, we have plenty of video surveillance, we have motion detectors, we've got infrared lighting, we've got, you name it, we've tried it, it's not working. We just got broken into again on Saturday night. They did about $1,000 damage to the fence. Had to call the welder out and have him fix the wrought iron fence. It's just continuous. So, I'm here to ask, beg, plead, cry if I need to, to please get this ordinance approved. It's my last resort, and I really don't have any other solutions beyond moving towards something like this. So, whatever you all could do for me, I would be really appreciative. Thank you.
You bet.
All right, that's it.
That's it, okay. I got a question to ask real fast, speaking of cutting fences. So, what happens if they cut the electrical wire? What happens? They got a cutter on them, and they're going to cut it.
Mayor Javier, members of the city council, thank you very much. My name's Keith Kenecko, very good question, practical question. So, the act of someone utilizing wire cutters, I mean, obviously if the sign didn't deter them, the perimeter fence didn't deter them or slow them down, that's where the monitoring component comes in, meaning it will detect if someone actually cut through the electrified security fence wires.
Okay, so did they get shocked? They're using wire cutters?
Yeah, if they're using conductive-
Cut the wires on the electrical wires?
If you're utilizing a conductive wire cutter, then yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Mayor Protem Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. So, I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, when we first started talking about this, there were several businesses that came before us who had such extreme expenses trying to keep repairing and replacing things for their business that they, not only was it a matter of property, but the staff were terrified to be there, to the point that some of our businesses were thinking about leaving Montclair. So, that's a loss of business, and those people, if the business went out of business, those people lost their jobs. So, I understand why this is needed, but I do have a couple of questions. So, in looking at the staff report, at the bottom of page five of 101, it says that there's a four to eight inches behind a minimum of a six-foot fence. So, I think when we first started talking about it, I was thinking that a brick wall would have some space between it and the fence, but this says four to six inches. So, if it's a solid wall and somebody that shouldn't goes over the fence, they could actually, if it's only four to six inches behind the fence, they could fall into the electric fence. So, I wonder if we can expand that space behind a block wall so that if they're climbing the fence, even though we know where they shouldn't be, but if they are, they're not going to fall into the fence. Is that an option that's available to us?
Yeah, let me, can I let Mr. Kenecko answer that question?
Certainly.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Johnson, for the question. The four to eight inches is not an arbitrary setback that we devised or staff determined. It's established by the International Elektrotechnical Commission standard, the same biomedical engineering experts that sit on the IEC commission. The reasons for that four to eight inch distance is to ensure that you don't create an entrapment zone, and so they don't want it, you know, creating this area, this kind of space that's just kind of like a no man's land per se. They specifically want it that tight because they determined that that is what's going to prevent someone from getting entrapped in between. But to your concern, understand that the way this system is designed, these are 12 and a half gauge wires, they're not very robust, they are flexible by design, and so the likelihood of anything or anybody getting entrapped between, it wouldn't happen. I mean, it's not a tight lattice structure, these are widely spaced wires that are very flexible. But again, the four to eight inches is not arbitrary, that, we cannot deviate, it's per state law and the IEC safety standard, which is mentioned in the actual code itself. That's before you tonight.
So, going on my analogy, there's a six-foot block wall, and we saw some pictures of a six-foot block wall with a fence with the sign showing. So, somebody who shouldn't goes over the fence, and then they fall into the electric fence that's non-lethal. I'm not quite sure that I know what that means. So, you know, if you, sometimes if you touch a plug at your house, it's like a little jolt, is it like that? Or is it something, is it a pulse? Is it, it's not a steady thing, right? It's a pulse. How long is the pulse, and how much voltage is a person going to get? So, the idiot who went over the fence and fell into the electrical fence, what are they, in that four to eight inches, or four to eight inches, what are they going to experience?
Okay, so, very good question again. So, let me explain to you how it functionally works and actually how it operates, because you actually asked the right questions. The system itself, the reason why it's medically safe, as Mr. Farias had mentioned, it's not our claim, it's the experts' claim that this technology is medically safe and engineered as such. It's because it's pulsed, it is not continuous current. So, the technology behind this is for our system, every 1.3 seconds, it sends a, less than a millisecond charge of current through the fence wires. And that charge is akin to a hard static shock. You get the same reaction that you're going to pull away and go, ooh, don't want to do that again. But again, that only occurs every 1.3 seconds. Tick, tick, tick. It's not continuously running through the fence. That's what makes it medically safe. With regard to getting, getting back to the technical aspects, these experts tested this worst-case scenarios. I mean, you know, rain, standing in puddles, you know, subjects of all different sizes, wildlife, pets, et cetera. I mean, this, all this was confirmed as safe to be utilized in urban environments, knowing that this is the utilization in this type of environment. So, just to clarify, again, what makes this technology safe is just purely because it is just an infrequent pulse of current that goes through the wires, and it's not connected to the grid. You mentioned about touching the plug, that's dangerous. That AC current is, can be very dangerous, and that's why you hear of electrocution incidents with people in plugs and hair dryers, et cetera. This is not that. We are solely powered by a 12-volt DC battery, just like the battery in your car or your boat. That is what the sole power source, this technology is not allowed to be plugged into the wall. So, there's kind of multiple failsafes built in to make sure that this technology is medically safe, and there's no concerns about something being direct connected to the wall. Again, building department will make sure that there's no plugs associated with, you know, this type of installation. It must be purely powered by a 12-volt DC battery.
Well, I am encouraged by your response because I envisioned the bug zapper in my backyard, where, you know, the bugs don't get to leave, but that's not what we're doing.
No, no, I know exactly what you're talking about.
But I have one other question, and it's about monitoring. So, it's not clear to me, when we talk about monitoring, does that mean like it goes to the alarm company, or does it notify a human? How exactly is the monitoring done?
Okay, no, very good question. I know a member from the public also mentioned concerns about monitoring. Monitoring is done by a third party, and our company, we have our own monitoring service, just like you have a monitoring service in your home alarm, ADT, whatever service you utilize, there's operators that are there 24/7, monitoring all the systems across the US. Same thing with our technology, that is the same thing. It's a person that's actually monitoring all these 6,000-plus electrified security fences across the US. They can identify when a potential breach has occurred. And the beauty of the system is it does not automatically call law enforcement. It must be verified. And I can speak for law enforcement, they appreciate that. They don't want a system that automatically triggers them to like go and check out a site. This system is designed, and the whole operation of it, is the operator must verify that an incident is in progress. And really, the onus is going to be upon Mr. Joe here, who's going to get the call from the operator at 2:00 AM in the morning saying, hey, we detected a potential breach on the, you know, railroad side of your property, please verify if law enforcement response is required. And he'll get on, look at his cameras, drive down to the site, whatever the case may be, and identify that, oh no, false alarm, my guys came in late at night, set off a false alarm, don't call law enforcement. Law enforcement will appreciate not getting that call. Conversely, he may go, look on his app, phone app, and go, I see six unauthorized individuals running to my property. Send law enforcement, there's a problem there. And the beauty of this is we can also provide some intel. I mean, that the operator will be talking to law enforcement, saying, hey, I see one individual, or I see six. I can guarantee you the response from law enforcement is going to be different if they see one person versus a whole gang of people. So, there's some sophistication and intelligence built into this technology, and the city has codified, is proposing that, in the code, that this system, it is required to be monitored. Doesn't take up any city's resources or staff to do the monitoring, it's all done by the alarm company or electrified security fence company.
Mr. Kenecko, you've answered all of my questions, thank you.
And to continue on your question, Chief Bill Fisher, Michael Torsey, can you come up for a second? The question on this whole three, the 12-volt, is it harmful for people?
Uh, no, like you said, it's non-lethal. It's painful to the touch, but like you said, it's a pulse. It's a pulse, it's not like the movies where they get hung up on the electric fence and they're frying. It's not like that at all.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Michael, appreciate it. Okay, we'll go to Councilmember Martinez next.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming to speak today, and I do agree that it is very important to protect especially our small businesses and your livelihoods, but it's also not a decision I think we as a council should be taking lightly. I do agree with Mr. Cole, but we're not in the business of hurting people in order to deter crime. So, I have a lot of questions, and I've grouped them into some groups of questions, and I'll try to be quick. But one of the things that came to mind for me, one of the things that came to mind for me is the effectiveness of this fence, you know, and I'm sure that every alternate route has been explored, but I just want to know, because I haven't heard, what about eight-foot tall brick walls? You know, is that something that's feasible? Is there a reason that it's not because of visibility? And then also, Mayor Ditré asked about if someone were to come in with the wire cutters. What about wire cutters that do not conduct electricity? Is it possible to, you know, break the fence and therefore they don't work anymore, and the city is expending money for a fence that's going to be easily broken? Can a metal pole be jammed in there and grounded, and can that affect the electric pulse somehow? And I'm not trying to give anyone ideas for how to break these fences, but I just want to know, you know, are there more cost-effective ways to go about deterring the crime? You know, bars on the windows, for instance, and I know there are issues with that, such as, you know, there are businesses that have equipment outside. You can't protect that with bars, I understand that, and I'm glad for that reason that we would be going through the process of having our staff verify that it's truly a necessity. But those are some of the thoughts on my mind, just the effectiveness, alternate routes, has this really been explored? Is there anything else that can be done? And for instance, another thing is, we have growing police presence. Are we going to be at a point soon where we can delegate and designate a police officer to this area, you know, as an alternate measure to having electric fencing up? And then, one more and I'll stop. But to piggyback off of Mayor Protem Johnson's point as to, you know, getting, what I understood was if someone gets stuck on a fence, for instance, you know, they're stuck on top of it, are there safety measures to make sure that at some point it gets turned off? If you need me to repeat any of those, I will, because I know that was a lot, and I'm sorry, but I have a lot.
Who wants to answer those questions? Anybody, any volunteers? Come on up. And then maybe Chief, and maybe Gabe, ask you guys come up too afterwards.
Sure. Councilmember Martinez, I appreciate these questions, those are all very practical and understandable questions. So, I'll kind of take it from the top. You know, just, first of all, just kind of alternative measures, you mentioned like a masonry wall. I know from your law-abiding, good, you know, member of the public perspective, nothing would be more robust than a concrete masonry wall. But from a criminal's perspective, you know what that is? The perfect perch to lean a ladder up, or just to throw something up, and a more robust structure to climb up and over. It's actually easier to climb over a masonry wall than it is a tubular steel fence, you know, that has little spiky things on top or whatever. So, the masonry wall issue, that's, Stotz has that, United Rentals next door has that. Criminals just hop right over. And you can see their footprints, that's the amazing thing. On wet days, on the nights that they get hit, I've been out there looking at their property, and you can see footprints where they actually used the wall to kind of step over. Now, just regarding this effectiveness, I can just speak from experience. Again, as Mr. Farias had mentioned, we have more than 1,000 installations across California. They continue to utilize this technology because it works. It works, meaning it is a strong deterrent. And really what this is, is there's probably the strongest component is the yellow warning signage that alerts a would-be criminal that, look, do not try this, okay? In my time with the company, seven years, I've yet to hear from a customer, number one, that wanted to cancel their contract because it's not working, and number two, I've never heard them say, you know, it kind of worked, they still got around it. That has never happened. Every single customer that I've spoken to, they say the day this technology was installed, that my criminal trespass problem stopped, property theft problem stopped. So, it absolutely works, we have time and precedence, you know, throughout this greater kind of inland empire area, that this technology absolutely works. Regarding the, you know, circumventing the system, that's the monitoring component. If someone is so brazen to actually want to try to cut the wires, you know, and use whatever insulated gloves, well, that's the beauty of the system. Immediately will trigger the operator that there's been a breach. You know, a cut wire is not a low voltage return to the brains of the system, it's a no voltage, and that is a different signal to the monitoring operator. They will know then that something cut the wires. And obviously, if it would usually, it would be a criminal if that were the case. I've never heard of that actually being tried. Again, I think it's just the strong psychological component, a criminal looks at this system and goes, I'm not going to try this. And that's what this is about, is deterrence, prevention, and that's the beauty of the system. Regarding the monitoring aspects, it can be turned off remotely. So, you asked your question, like, is it going to continue to run? No, the monitoring operator can turn it off remotely. Mr. Joe here, he can return, turn it off remotely via an app, it's all kind of built into the app system. So, this, if there is an issue, obviously it can be turned off. Is that everything?
And then just one more question, but this might even be more for the business owners. I don't believe that this would be a perimeter fencing, full perimeter fencing solution- I don't believe that this would be a perimeter fencing, full perimeter fencing solution, just along, you know, where there's more likelihood for crime to be committed. But if, if we have individuals who are so determined to commit the crimes, you're not having issues with them coming around from the front or accessing from another location?
Well, let me explain. Yeah, so, first of all, just to make sure there's no misunderstanding, this system, this technology, is not at the perimeter. There's always a masonry wall, or a tubular, non-electrified tubular wrought iron fence. We're always behind that system. This has to be around the entire kind of perimeter fenced area of a property. Think of United Rentals, Stoats Equipment, you know, they have unauthorized permitted wrought iron fence, decorative wrought iron fence, kind of going around the front of their property, et cetera. We would be then just on the interior side of that. We have to secure all sides. Think of your home. You lock your front door, side doors, believe your back door unlocked? Criminals are always going to find, they're going to find the next best point of entry. And if we don't protect the frontage of properties, they're going to come right over the front.
Well, thank you for clarifying, because I had it in my mind that the electrified fence would be the, on the outside of the wall.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Sorry, I missed that.
No, no, that's okay. I'm glad, that's why we're asking questions.
Okay. So this would be something that would protect the entirety of the business. This is not something that's going to protect half, you know, the back half of the business, and, and criminals could come around from the front entrance and commit the same crimes, crimes that they wanted to.
Oh, that's correct. Yep.
Got it. Okay. I think that, one more question, and this is just about the contract itself. There is an indemnity provision in here, and I, I, let's say that we have someone that gets injured, and they're gravely injured. Let's say there's a pacemaker, maybe, and somehow they're gravely injured. I don't understand the science, so I'm totally just making this up. In that situation, the business that would indemnify the city might not have the means to do so. So are, as part of allowing them the fences, is there going to be insurance? Are we going to make sure that the property owners have the insurance to do so?
Yes, that would be an insurance-related issue. So the indemnification would be a rider on the insurance policy that the city would be covered.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
As to the issue about police, obviously, even if we were at 200% staffing, we cannot assign police officers to patrol specific sites at a 24-hour basis. As you know, we have all the schools asking us to place police officers at each of the schools. We just can't have the staffing to do that. It's, you know, it's based on, on police officers having their beats, patrolling their beats, and looking out for crime opportunities and addressing those opportunities, or people calling in when they are suspicious, or when a crime is actually occurring. In this particular case, this system monitors, as indicated, if there is a break to the current, someone uses a bolt cutter, that sends out an alarm. The alarm company verifies that the break occurred, then the call would go to the police department. Same thing for any other type of effort to circumvent the system. I also want to point out, and this has been brought up before, that we're not talking about amperage. We're talking about volts. Amperage is a continuous current, and, for example, the ordinance points out that it's 7,000 volts. If you were getting 7,000 volts on a continuous basis, then yes, it would have detrimental effects on your health. But in this particular case, it's voltage that we're talking about. Voltage is pressure, not current. And voltage is interrupted, as indicated, it's a cycle where it goes off and on, and that break is sufficient to not cause the physical harm. Plus, I think the other point that we need to emphasize is this is a battery-connected system. It's not connected to the power grid, and therefore, amperage becomes less of an issue because it isn't connected to the power grid. It's connected to a battery system, which functions more on the basis of voltage as opposed to amperage. They're the same as far as producing currents, yes, but there is a distinct difference between amperage and voltage, and this system is a voltage-based system.
As to the police issue, I, I appreciate that there has been more presence in that area, and it seems that there has been a positive change, so thank you for that.
You know, and I want to clarify this. I know I asked Chief and Supervisor Fundero to come up, but, you know, along the railroad track area, we have a, a population there, Gabe, saying nice words, we have people residing there in the channels, which is operated by the Army Corps Engineers, am I correct? Channels, all the channels, the flood channels there, there's people in there. I know Gabe is working with the Army Corps Engineers, the railroad police trying to clear out people. They get cleared out, and what, 24 hours later, they're right back? Is that what you're experiencing, Gabe, out there? And they're kind of a, you know, they're sophisticated, right, Chief? There's, some of these folks are sophisticated, they have sophisticated machinery to open this stuff up. Go ahead.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, the police department was consulted, and of course, during this process. One of the things that, and Lieutenant Ventura is unable to attend, he's tonight, he's been working on the project, but he's been keeping me in the loop of everything that's going on. I think one of the major important factors is the instantaneous notification, like an alarm system, that whether someone rammed a truck through it or cut it, the, the alarm company holder, whoever that may be, I'm sorry, the business, the business owner, whoever that may be, would be able to monitor immediately and notify the police department to come out. One thing that I do want to mention, if there's concern with, of an entrapment of some kind, much like even with barbed wire, or someone injures themselves breaking into a business, even without an electric fence, we would have training to, you know, communication with the property owner to either disable the system or provide comfort for that person when we get there, safety blankets over the wires, whatever we would need. Of course, I'm speaking on behalf of the fire department as well, in that case, or in that scenario, or a coyote. I mean, I, I mean, anything can happen, we know that, but that's one of the, the factors of the system being an immediate, immediate notification that would be, we would approve of at the police department. Secondly, I do, on a personal level, I do agree that a block wall may deter a lot of things. What, what we do, we rely heavily on is visual when we drive by something at night on our patrol. If a block wall surrounding a business, we may not be able to see, and someone could be having a field day inside of a business, you know? So it is nice, some of these businesses, they want to show their product off, like a car dealership, John Deere, United Rentals, they want people to drive by, see the equipment they have, so that they go in there and shop there. At the same time, you don't want to create such a barrier where you can't see in there at all. And it's, it's a catch-22 on some of that stuff as well. As far as the beat, the city manager spoke correctly on that. We always have officers assigned to beats in the city, so every 24 hours, day 365, there's an officer assigned to that area of the city. It's a beat, usually called beat two or three in our city. So there are officers, and sometimes more than even one, but we can't sit there and monitor it continuously. We've been putting a lot of effort into the train tracks being a major issue. It's a necessary evil down there to have the train tracks. They've been there for 100 years. It's how we get product to one place or another, but it does create a, a very concealed place for, and even, people can even drive vehicles back there and back up to the fence and cause damage. But I hope I didn't go off on a tangent, but I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
I think it's also worth mentioning that in the railroad right-of-way, we are not allowed to enter the railroad right-of-way without permission of, in this particular case, Union Pacific. They guard that jealously. For example, if somebody puts graffiti on walls, we can't go in and remove the graffiti. The only way we are allowed to do that is if we make contact with the railroad. They require that we pay for flag personnel that will stand out there at the rate of about $80 an hour, and they will maintain vigilance at both ends while we work in between, if we're painting out the graffiti, so that the event that there is a train that comes down the track, then we are protected effectively by that flag person. Same thing with officers. Officers can go into the right-of-way if they're called because there is a crime or some other incident that occurs in the right-of-way, but they do not have permission to patrol the right-of-way without the authority of the railroad company.
Okay. Thank you.
And I can speak on behalf of the voltage concern. Now, of, of course, I'm not an electrician, but our TASER devices that we carry harness many more volts than 7,000, but it is an amperage versus a volt issue, where, you know, the people that design those items have designed them with the deterrent being key and not permanent damage of any kind. So when you hear the numbers, I believe a TASER, I could, speaking off memories, 40,000 some volts of, of a charge on a person, but it's milliamps in the delivery of that, and it's a little tiny battery that's in there. So you're not talking about voltage from an outlet of a house that provides hundreds of amps, if it allows the voltage to flow. So hopefully, that makes sense.
Thank you. All right. Let's go to Councilmember Lopez.
Chief, a question before I get into my other topic, since you're at the podium. And I'm trying to, I'm going to go somewhere with this question. The calculator criminal theory, the value of 900 and some dollars, where they, if it's under that threshold, they just get a citation and promise to appear in court. Does that same threshold apply to theft on some of these properties if it's below $900 or no?
Well, the, the $900 would make something a grand theft versus a petty theft, so.
Under the.
So, but the, the crime of burglary is still, can be prosecuted as a felony. So entering upon, entering a business with the intent to commit grand theft, petty theft, or any other felony is a burglary, it's a separate charge in itself. So you go into a, a retail store, or you go to someone's house, their garage, and you steal something, under that certain amount is treated as a misdemeanor as opposed to a felony. But as a, as a burglary, a burglary, the amount can still be any amount, but burglary would make that a more serious offense.
Okay, so two different things.
As long as they enter the, you know, the dwelling and steal, you know, because they've had, I know these businesses have had people enter inside as well, and the burglary, even if you steal less than the $950 threshold, it's, it's still a felony at that point.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarification on. Thank you. Thank you for that. Gosh, there's a lot to comment on. Let me ask Mr. Diaz, before I had to step out. And I think my colleague, Ms. Johnson, was alluding to it, page five of the staff report. The electric security fence system is required to be 48 inches behind a minimum six-foot-high non-electrified perimeter fence or wall. So, correct me if I'm wrong if I misunderstood what you said. They could have their electric fence two feet above the six-foot wall, correct?
Yes, the way the ordinance reads it's as two feet over the six-foot wall, yes.
So it could be a maximum of eight feet, then, if you add that.
I think we have 10 in the code, in case there's an existing fence that might have been a little taller to begin with. But at least minimally, to have this, you have to have a six-foot-high wall.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm glad that's in there. Thank you for that.
And can I push, point out one thing about the signage, too, and the, the distance behind it? One of the benefits, maybe this is not what it was intended, about having it so relatively close to the back of the wall, is that you can actually see the, the yellow signs that are on that particular system. If it was pushed further back, you, one could argue it was harder to see when exact, when the, what the effect of this is, is that the signs, where they are, as close as they are to the back of a fence, a permitted fence and wall, they're actually more visible.
Thank you for that. Folks, this has been a long time coming. We've had this discussion, at least for a year that I can remember. And in a memo that the police chief put out in the summer of last year, it included a printout of the calls that police had to respond to, to 5400 to 5600 Brook Street. In just a six-month period, from January 1 to July 1, there were 130 calls to Brook's businesses for theft, break-ins, a whole series of things. 130 calls. Now, if every single incident of those 130, taking what Ms. Lubman said, they've expended about 18,000 total on repairing one job, and then the Saturday incident was a $30,000 expense, so they're out, just on two instances of vandalism and theft, $48,000. If all the instances on one, the 130 calls were to that degree, times them by at least 18,000 to 30,000, that the business owners are out. So we want to talk about, we're not in the business of hurting anybody, we're not in the business of hurting anybody intentionally. However, the city is just enacting a policy that would allow the businesses to have the option of erecting an electric fence, should they want to, to protect their investment, their jobs, their property, and so forth. You know, folks, we've got to remind ourselves that unfortunately, because of the way one voters approved a proposition eight years ago or so, and then the passage of AB 101 by the, the ever-so-knowledgeable and wise legislature, emphasis on sarcasm, they have decriminalized many of the crimes that we used to severely punish these criminals with. Criminals that get citations for some crimes are given a slap on the wrist, a misdemeanor, and they're let go. So there's a mentality out in the criminal world that I can get away with crimes. We have folks, thugs, and criminals, and idiots, getting brazen and bold with no regard for property anymore. And we have to get just as forceful no-holds-bar and have all options on the table. Let's stop tying the hands of our police and actually give them more tools to fight. Now, a fence is a business, the fence is what the business would erect, but at least it would act as a deterrent, which would in turn drop the number of calls that are going to Brook Street and other areas in town. The reason why we're focusing on the southern end of town is not to attack folks based on race or them being of a poorer economic, social status. It's because that's just where those businesses are located, the train's located there, and thugs are taking advantage of the accessibility and the time of day in which they can strike. And it has to stop. If we don't have any businesses in Montclair, as John Deere alluded to the last time they spoke to us, that they were considered leaving after being here for 30 years and hiring folks that pay taxes here, we're not going to have any other jobs, we're going to have vacant buildings, we're not going to have added sales tax, and we're not going to have any money going into the general fund. So it's a vicious cycle here. Now, I doubt, given the money that these businesses are out, Stoats Equipment and John Deere's out $150,000 in a three-year period? Come on, folks. That's more than the average median income, three times, four times, the average median income in this city alone. And we're going to just have them, we're going to expect them to get surveillance systems and more security, and dogs, maybe, and this and that. As we've gotten from firsthand testimony tonight, Mr. Monte alone has proved that motion detectors and cameras, they've had them, they're not working. They're not a deterrent. And as far as I'm concerned, if you're in the business of committing crimes, or you're looking at stealing 30, $48,000 of merchandise and inflicting pain, financial pain on businesses, you deserve every sense of punishment that comes your way. And if that includes a little bit of a shock, then so be it. If you have a pacemaker and you're in the business of committing a crime, you're taking a stupid risk of putting your life on the line, and if you die, tough, you deserve it. Stop disrespecting property, stop disrespecting the business owners and all the thousands they invest to provide jobs and goods and services to their clientele. That's the free market, folks. Stop taking advantage of it. Respect it and support the police that are trying to keep the peace and back these businesses up. If it weren't for the business community in every city, cities wouldn't be thriving, and we would all be financially ruined. If someone is so stupid to break the law, you deserve every consequence. I have no sympathy for you. If you commit a crime by stealing from someone, and let's go on to a whole other litany of actual crimes, not civil issues, crimes, you deserve the extreme punishment that comes your way. I am sorry to all the businesses that have to deal with this. This is just one small measure that we could possibly provide you in, in, in trying to protect your property. I hope it works. What we need to do is toughen the laws to make sure there's another deterrent. So if you commit a crime, the penalty is so severe, it scares the hell out of you not to commit the crime in the first place. And unfortunately, this state and its liberal philosophy and, and infancy believes that their policies are working, they're not. That's why people are leaving this state in droves, that's why folks are looking for jobs out of state, and that's why many people are living in fear.
I think, I think you made your point. So, let's, let's, approved by the planning commission on the 5-0 vote, I don't know if that was ever brought up. I think, I have a funny feeling Xavier, this is, you spent more time on this issue, and you guys are on the planning commission, Xavier? Yeah? Okay. So Councilmember Beru is next, and I'm hoping he'll be making a motion for, for approval. Go ahead.
I do have a few questions. We did have a resident tonight who approached the diocese and asked some questions, and in fact, he took the time to put it in a letter. These are legitimate questions about animals and everything else. I hope so. I hope somebody from staff will be able to answer them. I understand also the side of a business owner who is seeing their business robbed, their livelihood attacked. We need to look at this very holistically. I don't have enough, if, if, tonight, we're going to vote to decide whether we take it to a second reading. I don't have enough information on certain things to make that decision. One of the questions I have is, I'm not a criminal. I'm driving my car down the street near the front of that business, the time the fence, the electric fence is operating. And it's not a block wall, we, nobody just wants a block wall in front of their business. And it's a wrought iron fence, and then the electrical fence. Something happens, I'm sick or whatever, I, my car crashes into that. What happens? Does the car get electrocuted or electrified, and then I'm electrocuted in my car? They're saying, no, I, I would wanna have some answers. What if somebody is walking down the street? They're not a criminal, they happen to be walking, and maybe they work in the neighborhood. And I'm talking the front of businesses. And for some reason, something happens, they fall into that fence, what happens? They may not be a criminal, I, we've gotta deal with the criminal aspect. So there's just some questions I, I don't have answered yet. I'm, I understand the point of business, and I concur that something needs to be done. And in many cases, we're seeing people taking advantage of businesses, and that, that has to be done, we do need to deal with this. I also want to address an issue that seems to come up quite often in this city when it comes to crime. And believe me, I do not want crime in this city. We seem to have a knee-jerk reaction, though, that says it's the homeless, the unsheltered, they're the ones committing the crime. I volunteer with a couple of groups that deal with the homeless, and, uh, most of them aren't committing crimes like this. If they commit a crime at all, it's petty theft, which they shouldn't do to begin with. But most of them are not breaking into a business like this, the loading dock stealing this, because they don't have the wherewithal to do it. So we have to deal with the professional groups that are doing this, I think that's what it is. And I do wanna see business protected, I understand the need for this. I can't change state laws sitting here. I am not the voters who decided to put something in that allows you to steal. I saw it at the time, and wondered what the voters were thinking. We can blame the state all we want, we can blame anybody we want, we can blame anything. Nonetheless, we have a problem, we'd have to deal with it. I'd like the answers to the questions presented tonight, as far as, it was rather well-written about animals, things like that. I also want to know, very specifically, that if this goes through, it's limited to specific businesses, as we say, because I can see this mushrooming out of control. I can see car dealers on Holt Boulevard saying, we need this in the front of our business. I can see eventually residents saying, oh, I need an electric fence in my backyard, I need one in my business. The question becomes, where does it end? We, as a council, if we do this, need to make sure the parameters are set in place to limit this. That's a long-term concern of mine. It's creeping, it's like the frog in boiling water. Today, it's this business because they're near the railroad tracks, tomorrow, it's a business on Holt because, well, they sell cars. Then the next thing is, well, we have a hospital, and they're breaking into our medical lab and stealing narcotics. You know, we have to be careful how we use this tool, so that we do not wind up in a situation where, wherever we go with just electrified fences. So, uh, the mayor asked if I'd make a motion, yes, I will make a motion to continue it to the next council meeting, regularly scheduled council meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, and I'm going to, um, I'm going to provide a, uh, a, uh, what's called now, I'm gonna.
Adlin number only?
No, I'm gonna move this, I'm gonna move this item, well, let's just do this, make it simple here. I don't believe that we should continue side him, staff's done a really good job putting this together. Um, I think there's, I think the fears that you, some of you're raising are not fears. The staff report, the ordinance really addresses a lot of this. We have, we have industry already out there that has proven that this works, you go on the websites, you know, do your search, which I, what I just did here during the meeting, and this is a very safe system, it's a very effective system. Um, you know, um, I'll say this, we have a problem, guys, we have a problem on that railroad. Uh, we have, you know, it's gonna be a combination of folks who are just living out there, and folks who are just driving out there and trying to break into, into, uh, into, into businesses, you know? I've, I've done my ride along with police, I'm with code enforcement, you know, especially with code enforcement, I've been out there, I've seen the activities, I've seen pictures, you'd be, you'd be surprised, these people are living in channels, and they're stealing stuff, and driving trucks down there, and the flood channel is down there, and we clear them out, and then, you know, like, you know, twenty-four hours later, right, Gabe, they're right back. So we have a problem there. So to me, we've already continued this item, when this issue was first brought up to us, I don't know, six months ago by the property owners here. And, um, I, I think it's very unfair for us to, just to continue it. We, we have a staff here, that we trust our staff, they bring us professional recommendation, we do that. We have a planning commission on a five-zero vote, five-zero vote that already went through all this, who's recommending to the city council that we approve this. So I'm asking my council colleagues tonight not to continue this, but to approve this this evening. So we have a motion in front of us, either Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah, um, I, I just don't want our silence to be construed as support for the hateful rhetorics, um, spewed by Councilmember Lopez. I disagree wholeheartedly, and I believe that the majority of our council and our residents would disagree that an attempted crime does not justify death. Um, that's absolutely insane to me that, that that comment was made.
Well, I'll ask you to put that comment aside here, and let's focus on the issue that's in front of us right now, an ordinance regarding this.
The reason I said this is, it says.
Okay, wait, 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 you don't have the floor. Councilmember Martinez, now goes Councilmember Lopez.
Point of order, Madam, um, City Attorney, um, the, the item before us is just a first hearing, we have to carry this over to a second reading.
That's what I mean, that's what I want, consider, consider setting a public hearing to, to second reading, and to consider the adoption of the ordinance two four one zero zero, uh, on Monday, February fifth, that's what I'm saying, move it, that's what we have, that's what's in the agenda, what we have to do.
Okay, so you're saying that we approve it as a first reading tonight, and then bring it back at the February fifth meeting?
Correct.
Okay, then I misconstrued, I apologize.
City Attorney, can you please provide a statement?
Yeah, well, the. There's everybody time to get questions answered.
The council can continue the item if they would like, they can also approve the first reading, and then it comes back again. Now, I understood Councilmember.
I misspoke when I said continued, I, I should've said, consider setting a public hearing.
Okay, so are you moving staff recommendation to?
Yes, because I have a lot of questions that need still to be answered. I believe a member of the public does deserve to have his questions answered that are in here. There are probably issues with the business community as well. So what I'd like to do is consider setting a public hearing for the second reading, and to consider adoption of the ordinance two four dash one zero zero five to Monday, February fifth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven PM in the city council.
I'll second.
Okay, so what we have in front of us is a motion to adopt this ordinance as a first reading, and then the second reading, second reading will be heard on February the fifth. So any questions on that motion?
I wanna be clear, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Rue, is your motion to conduct the first reading of this ordinance tonight and approve it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and just clarifying that.
Setting a public hearing for the second reading, and to consider adoption of the ordinance on Monday, February fifth, two thousand twenty-four. To me, this gives time for us to add, finish questions, and for staff to be able to answer a, a, a well-written set of questions from the public.
Okay, so the, uh.
All right.
We have a motion on the floor, Councilmember Lopez, you have something to say?
Well, it was just for that clarification, I do have a question, but I'll talk to you afterwards, or the next hearing, sir.
Okay.
That's at the discretion of the mayor.
We're gonna, we're gonna vote. If there was questions, um, I think we answered all the questions, in my opinion, but maybe I'm wrong.
Mine will be quick if you will allow me.
But, uh, uh, all right, go ahead, you got a question, go forward.
Talk about access to the property, I believe there was a statement that they got to verify first by the business before an operator sends police over. I wanted to ask, access to the property regarding a police officer that needs to get into property or a fire engine, what happens then? Does the app, operator contact the business before they're allowed in? Because if there's a fire, okay, you're shaking your head, no, please, and then I will be done for now.
Required for these installations is the, uh, installation of a NOX device, which is essentially a switch, which gives first responders, they have the master key to deactivate the system prior to entry.
Thank you, that's good, thank you.
Okay, all right, so with that, Ed, did you have any questions on this, uh, before we vote, because I don't know if you have, do you understand?
No, I, I understand clearly the council's direction on this.
Some councilmembers there some questions.
I think I do wanna respond to Councilmember Lopez, he asked a question as to whether or not the council had to approve the first reading, and no, the council doesn't have to approve first reading, they could've terminated this process today going forward and just ended it. Um, so there's no requirement that you have to approve first reading to go to the second.
That's true. Okay, so let's, uh, vote. Okay, uh, that's adopted five-zero, so I'll come back as a second reading at the next, next city council meeting. All right, so we're done with public hearings, now we go down to the consent calendar of the agenda, and I'll start with my right and see the members of my right want to remove any items for, on the consent calendar for questions or comments, anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I need to pull, uh, item B nine for a separate vote, please, and just item B eleven for a quick question to staff or the city manager.
And item what, B eleven?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd like to pull item.
Item number C two.
Item C two, okay. How about my left, anybody have any items they wanna pull on my left?
I was planning on pulling C two, but that's already been done.
All right, C two's been pulled, anybody else?
B nine.
And B nine, okay. So, we got the consent calendar, we're gonna put B nine on the bottom, and we'll go down to item B eleven. Right, B eleven, this is the, uh, the fire inspection?
Real quickly.
Who has it?
That would be me. Uh, Mr. City Manager, I'm curious, the, this report, um, it only, it, the, um, the inspections took place fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three? So July, July one through June thirtieth? Okay, I'm curious, regarding the apartment condo, uh, completion, why are we only at ten percent completion?
Because of the number, we simply don't have the staffing to complete all of the inspections at this point in time, but we are continuing that process and do expect it to be completed this fiscal year.
Now, is, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we do this in-house, or are we contracted with the company or individual to do this?
We have been doing it in-house, but we would contemplate expanding that to a contract requirement with the current company. We are utilizing, utilizing for our deputy fire inspection services.
In the hopes that perhaps more manpower could address more of the.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, that's B eleven. The next one is item C two, um, and who wants to begin with that?
Mr. Mayor, I pulled the item. This is in regard to the amounts we pay to the, uh, Seminole County, uh, Association of Governments and cost to member agencies. Apparently, at the meeting, it was decided there would be, these dues would be based on fifty percent population, fifty percent sales and property tax received. Uh, our dues have gone from fifteen thousand five forty to thirty-one thousand three hundred and seventy, so it's doubled. I'd like to know why they're not looking at a population only. To me, it makes sense, if this is the county Association of Governments, the, the cities of the larger populations have a lot more work they need to do, so they should be paying a larger share for that population. Does anybody know why?
Well, I sent on the ad hoc committee, uh, was with Supervisor Hagman, Supervisor, uh, Jesse Armartari, if I can say correctly, along with, thank you, along with Councilmember Alan Watner, Councilmember Dennis Michaels, Fontana Mayor, Akun Warren, and Mayor Helen Tran from the city of San Bernardino. And so we went through all this, we looked at population, we looked at taxes, combining, and at the end of the day, we felt that there should be fifty percent population, fifty percent taxes. It was meant to, uh, you know, a combination of the large cities, small cities, trying to get consensus with, with all cities in, in the county of San Bernardino, um, and that's the reason why it is fifty percent population and fifty percent based on tax revenue.
Well, I, I think it do needs to be added that this is actually a hybrid, it's not specifically, uh, based on fifty percent population, fifty percent sales and property tax revenues. The, uh, current process for determining costs or contributions by each member agency is based on the current formula, which is population and assessed valuation. That component will continue, uh, based on the current contribution amount, uh, going forward, added to that will be nominal amounts related to other related approvals that councils have authorized over the course of the last, uh, couple of decades. And then the new component going forward will be based on the fifty percent population and fifty percent sales and property tax revenue received. So it's a hybrid that takes advantage of a combination, so that it does not burden any one particular agency based on any one factor, more so than other agencies. So there was an effort to try and create, create equity amongst the various agencies based on a variety of different factors.
And I'm, I'm not going to jump on my sword on this, but to me, it would be, it, it seems you're punishing cities that are successful by putting out a property and sales tax. I, I tend to think cities that have much larger populations tend to have more problems that, I'm not talking about crime, I'm talking about more problems that they need to deal with in relationship to the county, and therefore, they should pay accordingly, but that's just my thought.
Okay, um, did you have a question, a comment?
I, I had a question that I think was answered, but my, as I look through table three of the assessment dues and potential increases, it looks like historically, every city has had to pay the same amount, and I didn't understand why it was different. So I understand now that it's, there's a need for a different formula.
And I'll, I'll make this short, uh, the reason why this is here is because, uh, there's Seminole County Transportation Authority, you know, they're the sponsor of that mess on the ten freeway, transportation projects, and then part of that same staffing, there's the Seminole Council Governments, been around for a while, but we have been a very minimum effective council governments in terms of trying to, uh, do share services among cities. So if a city, you know, we don't want one city, and this next city, and next city doing the same thing, and this is an opportunity where the council governments can take on some of that responsibilities and, and hopefully reduce costs. So our cog has been very weak because we don't, we don't have any staffing, staffing comes from, uh, the Transportation Authority. So what we're trying to do is add more people, hire more people as part of the council government to take on more activities that will benefit the cities and the county of San Bernardino. For example, the San Gabriel Council Governments, which, which covers Pomona and Claremont and goes west, is a very active cog that has, they do a lot of services for their cities. The same thing in Riverside County, they have two cogs, they have the Western Riverside Council Governments, and then they also have the Coachella Valley Council Governments, and those have been very active, and this what's, so that is something we're trying to resemble that, uh, with those, what those council governments have done. So another thing I wanna point out here, yeah, Montclair's paying fifteen thousand dollars now, and, uh, this will be thirty-one thousand, doubles, but City of Ontario currently pays twenty-seven thousand dollars, and then theirs will increase to a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. City of Fontana currently pays sixteen thousand dollars, oops, somebody's saying this correctly, twenty-eight thousand dollars, I'm, excuse me, and theirs will be going to a hundred thousand. And I wanna say the county of San Bernardino currently. And I want to say the county of San Bernardino, currently the county of San Bernardino pays thirty-three thousand dollars, and they'll get the biggest increase. They go from thirty-three thousand dollars to three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. And I want to commend especially Supervisor Hagman, because we posed that question to him in the ad hoc committee and asked him, is the county comfortable basically adding another three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to the cog? And he says, we'll make it happen. So I want to commend the county of San Bernardino for stepping in and really covering about one-third of the cost, of the new cost. All right, I think I said enough there. Any, any more comments there? Okay, so the remaining item is item B nine. So Councilmember.
Martina. Yes, I'm, I'm gonna read just a few quick excerpts, and then I'll make some brief comments. So this city council agenda report reads in part, "The city council, in its role as the governing body of the city of Montclair, has a duty to the residents and employees of Montclair to ensure that the laws of the United States and the state of California are followed, and the rules, regulations, policies, and ordinances of the city are complied with. Furthermore, this duty is primary in the area of employer-employee relations. In pursuit of the above duty, it is essential for the effective governance of the city of Montclair for the public to have confidence in the integrity, dignity, competence, professionalism, decorum, and behavior of its elected and appointed leaders, and their fair, respectful, courteous, and dignified treatment in regard for the employees of Montclair and members of the public. At a March first, 2022 special meeting, the Montclair City Council was made aware of two verified complaints and lawsuits filed by two City of Montclair employees against both Councilmember Benjamin Lopez and the City of Montclair. The complaints contained allegations of discrimination based on sexual orientation and unlawful sexual harassment charged against Councilmember Benjamin Lopez. At the conclusion of discussion at the March twenty first, 2022 regular meeting, the city council adopted a motion directing staff to prepare a resolution of censure of City Councilmember Benjamin Lopez for city council consideration at the April fourth, 2022 city council meeting. At the April fourth, 2022 meeting, the city council did find that the interaction that Councilmember Benjamin Lopez had with certain employees was reprehensible, inappropriate, abusive, and disrespectful, and brought disrepute to the city of Montclair and the Montclair City Council. Further, the city council stated that it did not condone or approve of the type of conduct and behavior exhibited by Councilmember Benjamin Lopez, and found it necessary and prudent to declare its strong disapproval of such conduct and behavior. Based on the nature of the allegations and findings reached by the independent investigator that sustained the allegations, together with the filing of two verified complaints and lawsuits by the two employees containing allegations of discrimination based on sexual orientation and unlawful sexual harassment against, against Councilmember Benjamin Lopez, the city council determined that there was sufficient cause to consider adoption of a resolution of censure, and adopted resolution number twenty-two dash three-three-three-nine, censuring Councilmember Benjamin Lopez for the behavior and conduct described therein, and further expressed the strongest possible disapproval and disavowal thereof. The city council concurrently determined that the city manager had a duty and responsibility to the city's employees to protect them from harassment, discrimination, bullying, and retaliation, whether it is from a member of the public, another employee of the city, or from a member of the city council. And therefore, the city council ratified a March third, 2022 document prepared by the city manager entitled, "Restrictions on Access to City Facilities and Prohibition Against Contact with City Employees", a copy of which was transmitted to Councilmember Benjamin Lopez. Accordingly, in keeping with city council direction, Exhibit One fully lists all litigation, mediation, and settlement expenditures as of December thirty first, 2023, related to the matter of Garcia Fuentes versus Lopez, the total of which is currently listed at seven hundred three thousand dollars fifty, uh, seven hundred three thousand fifty-two dollars and nine cents. Identified expenditures do not list city staff time, nor the loss of productivity related to dealing with matters concerning Garcia Fuentes versus Lopez. Furthermore, as it relates to the three thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars in expenditures made to the law firm Liebert Cassidy Whitmore for sexual harassment training as required by resolution number twenty-two dash three-three-three-nine, and despite numerous efforts made to advise Councilmember Lopez of the date and time for scheduled training, the record reflects that Councilmember Lopez did not attend the scheduled training. Not only has Councilmember Lopez committed the acts as, as set forth, he has shown no remorse, no responsibility. His refusal to attend sexual harassment training, the fact that he religiously attends events that are city-sponsored, that have our city staff members present, the ones that we need to attend those events, they did not attend for years, and they are barely starting to attend these events. These events are necessary for their jobs. These city employees do not attend city council meetings anymore. These are city employees that were always at council meetings. They have not been at council meetings in years, making it more difficult for them to perform their job. Councilmember Lopez has frequent contact with city employees, despite numerous requests for him to cease that behavior. His, his actions show a complete disregard for the censure. And I, it needs to be made well aware to our residents that seven hundred three thousand dollars, that's not even entirely it. We have wasted so many staff resources investigating the matter, taking city staff away from their, their jobs to, to work on the, the litigation issue. And I think that our residents need to be made aware. More than just the thirteen residents that are here with us today, our residents need to be made aware of the situation. That is almost a million dollars. That is so close to a million dollars. That can go towards parks, recreation, law enforcement, making sure that our parks are taken care of, our city staff. And it's just ridiculous that Councilmember Lopez sits here and proudly dawns the badge of city council member. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I have some comments to make. This is a very difficult situation we're in. Obviously, as a city, we have to protect our employees, and that's an obligation, not just among our principles here, but also by law. And when an employee engages in harassment, there's an investigation takes place, which took place with Councilmember Lopez. And if the investigation allegations are found to be true, then typically, there's discipline that takes place with the employee, and depending on the severity of the, the issue. In this case, probably sexual harassment usually leads to termination, which is, I know what this city has done in that, in that particular field. In this case, a city council member cannot be terminated or, in this case, removed from their council colleagues. The only way your councilman gets removed is either by a recall election or the next election when the voters do not reelect that same person. So really, it's, it's a matter of not the city staff or city council, it's a matter of the people of Montclair when it comes to their governing body. As noted again, seven hundred and three thousand dollars has been expended. Five hundred and fifty thousand of that was expended as a settlement to the employees. I was told that there was a mediation hearing in which the city was, the city, the employees were present, but Councilmember Lopez did not, did not participate in, even though he was asked, asked to participate, he did not participate in. And after that mediation hearing, the city had no choice but to settle this matter with the two employees, because if we went to a jury trial, we would have paid a lot more than five, five hundred fifty thousand dollars, plus we would have paid a lot more in legal cost for our trial. So that's the position the city council was placed in. Perhaps if Councilmember Lopez did, did appear and participate in mediation hearing, perhaps the settlement cost would have been a lot less. But I can't predict what that outcome would have been. The case continues. The city attorney can interrupt me if I am mistaken. The legal case of the employees continues, and the city is also involved in a cross complaint against Councilmember Lopez regarding this case. So obviously, we will continue to incur litigation costs until there's some resolution, in this case, either a resolution by settlement by all the parties or if this eventually goes to a trial and is decided by, by the Superior Court system. As I stated before, um, this is a matter of the people of Montclair. And I realize, you know, November twenty-four is the election going on, so I'm not trying to make this a political issue. I'm trying to make it as professional as I can. But this is an issue that people of Montclair should be aware of. And frankly, I think if the people of Montclair understand the facts of the case, understand the, the amount of money has been, being expended, I do believe that much of the people, much of the Montclair residents will be basically upset that such event took place and that appalled that the waste of taxpayers' money is occurring for reckless behavior. So I've been thinking back and forth, and I'm gonna ask tonight, council colleagues, that we ask staff to bring an item back to either the next council meeting or the council meeting after that, depending on how much time. And I've been thinking that we send out a letter to all the households of Montclair, a copy of the staff report, maybe a simple cover letter. Again, this is non-political, and I have to be careful, because I know, you know, the city attorney on my left is saying, you know, we have to be careful how we engage in it. But this is strictly a public information to the Montclair residents, informing them what's happened. And it's really, you know, something the Montclair residents, they read it. They have to decide if, you know, this is true, not true, what they want to believe, not read it, whatever it is. But I think the Montclair residents deserve to know this is occurring. And, you know, it's like our presidential election, we, we got a candidate running for president. He was gone through the court system right now. I won't mention any names, and he's running for president. And I think everybody knows about it, and they have a decision to make, you know. I believe it, don't believe it, whatever the case may be, but that's the American people's right to know, and the same thing here. So I'm gonna ask, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to bring an item back, either the next meeting, the meeting after that. Let us know what the cost is to put out a information piece to the, to the members of, to the Montclair public. Can I get a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion to that. We'll take it as a separate item from the rest of the consent calendar. This item actually is a, is a receive and file. I don't think requires action approval on C nine. It says receive and file. But for what I'm asking for is an action item. So can I get a vote then that we direct staff to bring this back to the city council?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
With respect to your motion and the hit piece that you're intending to send, will there be ample time for the minority opinion, which would be me, to express the opposing view in this?
You have every right to do that out of your own pocket, but this is not a hit piece. I'm sorry you have to say this, but it's not a hit piece. This is strictly a PIO. I'll remind you that we had a censure hearing on you. You did not speak about it. You did not object to it. And again, this is not a hit piece.
I objected. I voted against it.
Nevertheless, well, maybe you voted against it, but you didn't say anything about it. You didn't defend yourself or anything. So, and you didn't come to a mediation hearing, you know. So I don't know.
I'll address that in my comments next.
So if you want to put a piece out, you're welcome to do it at your own expense. So any other comments, or can we vote?
On not, on this motion, I don't have any comments. I do have comments with respect to the agenda as item.
Okay, let's, let's vote. Okay, item is adopted four to one with Councilman Lopez voting no. All right, so any other comments on item B nine?
Before I make my comments, sir, I noticed I was interrupted twice tonight in the middle of my comments. I'm asking that I not be, since I haven't interrupted anybody tonight or other prior council meetings. I was not actually going to make a statement, but I am tonight. Regarding the date and time of the training issue, it is not accurate that I refuse to attend, absolutely not accurate. In a June sixth, 2022 email from my attorney to the city manager, it states in part, "Therefore, in an attempt to move forward with and serve the citizens of Montclair, my client is willing to discuss a resolution to this issue with the following condition. My client is willing to acknowledge that he attended the class, but he will not refuse to acknowledge any wrongdoing. Second, we would like a copy of the contents of the training before he attends. And third, at the time, there was a requirement that I travel all the way to Los Angeles early in the morning, and that is something that I physically at the moment, or at that time especially, even more so, could not do. So we kindly requested that it be moved to Montclair as it was bantered around initially. Please have your council contact me at the soonest opportunity to discuss this matter further. To date, we have not gotten a reply to that email. There's, that's where we stand with respect to the training. But have I refused? Absolutely not. Now, that said, I have met the obligations by the state to attend the sexual harassment training and all other forms of training, and that certificate of completion is on file with the city clerk. Correct, Madam City Clerk? Thank you. She nodded in the affirmative. With respect to the mediation and this claim that I somehow, it is implied, fragrantly refuse to attend, I remember that day very well, all of you, because I was in the hospital on a gurney, and I reached out to my counsel to inform city council and the two plaintiffs' counsel of that fact. So if I'm to be punished for not attending a mediation hearing because I was in the hospital, then I think that's pretty cold-blooded and inconsiderate, considering that I was hospitalized at the time. I would think you guys would have a little bit more understanding and grace before you make the accusation. And at least do your research and ask before you make comments. I contend the allegations made against me are made for political reasons. Those attorneys that have represented me and advised me still contend that the city should in fact be defending me, just as it has done and is doing for a former employee hit with similar accusations by another employee who is also suing the city. We have answered so in a response to the city's cross complaint that was filed. Regarding the dispensation of funds and the total, I would like to note that in early 2022, my attorneys in direct talks with the plaintiff's counsel requested that the two cases be merged, since the charges are identical. There are the exact five charges. This would have saved all parties from expending unnecessary funds, including the city, our effort to save money all around. Opposing counsel refused this reasonable request. I understand I'm one of five on this council. I don't control spending up here alone. But I would not have rushed to judgment in approving the dispensation of funds as this report purports. I certainly do not, I certainly rather would not do so if the role was reversed for one of my colleagues. I have maintained my innocence, and I am entitled to that right. These cases are going on three years now. They could have been tried and settled by now, but these cases are part of a concerted plan to ruin me financially, personally, and politically, clearly politically first and foremost. Just this last November, it was stated in court that opposing counsel wants these cases to be tried just weeks before the November 2024 election, and specifically not after. It is even stated by those behind the lawsuits that they want me reme- It is even stated by those behind the lawsuits that they want me removed from office. I have also been told that certain city staff have been sent text messages and/or emails from private accounts to certain residents asking if they would be willing to attend council meetings to attack me publicly, and that talking points and scripts would be provided. Many feel in the past 10 to 12 years that the city takes pleasure in destroying people that they disagree with. Unfortunately, I am now beginning to share that sentiment. The ultimate motive here is clear, and it's even more clear now given the motion that just passed. I have no hate towards anyone, even those behind the lawsuits orchestrating the lawsuits or supporting these lawsuits. I have no hate towards any of my colleagues up here at all. Throughout the course of this two-and-a-half, three-year journey, I have been nothing but respectful and civil to all of you. Even if we've had some tense disagreements up here, I don't take it personal, and I don't hold you to it personally. You know, hatred corrodes the container it is kept in, and that is a burden that I'm not going to waste bearing. I have no hate towards anyone, not even those involved, but I just would simply ask for no rush to judgment and allow my opportunity to share my views. If anyone is interested, I'd be happy to speak to you. That is all for the moment.
And those are your opinion, and I can state that I disagree with your
As are yours.
I didn't interrupt you now, so you don't have to interrupt me now. But in regards to the mediation hearing, the mediation hearing I'm speaking of was before you were dealing with your medical issue. I believe we were talking about was your deposition when there was
That was completed August 31st.
And it resulted because of your medical issue, your deposition was delayed at a later date in 2023. I think your deposition was originally scheduled for late 2022, if I'm correct. The mediation took place much earlier prior to your, I understand, your medical condition occurred. Am I correct, City Manager Starr?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, that is not correct, because I was hospitalized
Okay, you know what, you made your, excuse me, you made your comments, I made my comments. I interrupted you, you don't have to interrupt me. We have a disagreement.
Be consistent and get your facts right.
You know what, you know what, you don't have a right to sit here and harass people, harass employees, and try to spin us around as though you're innocent, you didn't do anything wrong. Ben, you did something wrong. You refused, you refused, you refused to accept it. The politics, being elected official is more important to you than trying to be, to do the right thing. You know, the right thing for you to have been done is for you to resign from office. Unfortunately, you have caused the city to spend $703,000, you can care less about it. You know, for $703,000, you could put some money towards the park, in Saratoga Park. For $703,000, you could probably buy 10 more police cars. For $703,000, we can go ahead and pave some more streets in the city of Montclair, but that wasn't important to you. So I know there's some folks, some folks in the audience kind of smiling over here, but this is a serious matter. And I really do believe that the people of Montclair, and you may be the little minorities over here, but I do believe the people of Montclair, when they find out and get the facts, they're going to be upset about it. And like I said before, this is not a political issue, this is issue based on the facts, the business of this city here, what I'm looking out for. I can care less about the fucking politics, excuse my language. So let's move on with the item before us. We've got to take a vote on the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I still would like a recorded vote on item B9, please, for filing.
B9 is a receiving file, so we'll just take it off the agenda, there's no reason to vote on it, so.
So be it then.
We will be the consent calendar with exception of item B9. You okay with that, City Attorney?
That's up to you. I think staff would want it received and filed.
Okay, then we'll take a vote on it, and we'll have a separate vote on B9. So we'll just do consent calendar, exception of B9, and can I get a motion?
This is without B9, correct?
No B9.
Okay.
Is there a motion? I move for approval. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, got a second. Let's vote. All right, it's adopted. Now, motion on B9, move for approval as a consent, as a receiving file. Can I get a second? All right, you got a second? Let's vote on it. That's adopted four to one. Okay, so next item will be communication. Let's start with the City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind the council that we're having an appeal hearing on January 29, so that's a week from Monday, at 6:00 PM here. So just a reminder.
Everybody has it on their calendar? Yes? All right. City Manager?
No items.
Okay. I just want to announce March 2, Miles to, March to Miles, excuse me, Montclair High School's annual walk. That will be held on Saturday, March 2, sometime in the morning. I know Councilmember Ru is interested in that event. We'd like to also announce Calaveras Restaurant, they have billing permits been issued. Am I correct, Mike? They will have, so permits have been issued, they haven't really started construction out there yet, but they're ready to go. I also want to announce that street striping, I know that some of our city streets, the stripings look pretty bad, or faded, so staff is working on a master plan to get our street striping back in order. And then I'd also like to recognize Public Works. If you weren't this afternoon at 5:00 PM in the parking lot, they were displaying some of the new equipment that they purchased, so that was great to see. And then finally, I want to recognize our Montclair High School boys and girls soccer teams. If you don't know, the boys team is number 14 in the state ranked, and the girls team is number 69 in the state ranked, so their, both teams are doing very well at Montclair High School, Montclair High School Boys Club. Historically, they've had good soccer teams. So let's start with my left. Go ahead.
I've spoken enough tonight, thank you. I have nothing further.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really quickly, first and foremost, I want to thank everyone who attend, all 103 people who attended the firefighter recognition luncheon. Thank you to Chief Poehl for helping us to get that organized, and it was just heartwarming to see so many people say so many things about our police department. So thank you, Chief Poehl, for that. And we're looking forward to a police recognition in May. Stand by, Chief Reed, I'll be tapping you for questions. So that's coming up sometime in May, we don't have a date yet, but it's coming. And then you heard earlier that Chino Basin Water Conservation District is doing a time capsule event on the 18th, which is day after tomorrow, it's at 11 o'clock. There's also a ribbon cutting at Al Pastor that same day on the 18th at noon, and the first 50 people who arrive for the ribbon cutting get a free lunch. And then on the 24th, She Math Educational Foundation, that's right over there on Marino and Vernon, is having ribbon cutting on the 24th at noon. And as many of you know, the chamber has recently relocated from its old location. It is now at 9916 Benson, excuse me, 9916 Central Avenue, and we are having our grand open and ribbon cutting luncheon on February 1st. So I hope that you will all attend that. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Great, Councilmember Lopez?
Yes. January 7, at the Canyon, the Montclair High School Football Booster Club had their end of the year, end of the season banquet, where they honored 11 to 12, I believe, 11 to 12 seniors that were leaving the team, and acknowledged them for their exemplary accomplishments this past season. They also gave the Coach of the Year Award to Mr. Jonathan Navarro, so congratulations to Coach Navarro. And then a player that is a senior and leaving, I didn't get his first name, but his last name is Teehee, he is a senior. He, while he was still a senior and attending the high school, he was already enlisted into the Army and selected for playing football in the Army. So that says a lot, given that he was technically a high school student, already acknowledged for his talents, advanced to that team. So he will be playing for the Army as he continues his enlistment and his education. So to the young gentleman, Mr. Teehee, congratulations, and Godspeed to you, and much success in your endeavors, and your education first, but into your football career as well. As my colleague Ms. Johnson just stated, the Montclair Chamber of Commerce hosted a very well-attended event, and I was told the story that the Friday, or no, sorry, a couple days before, they were looking for folks to fill the tables, I believe it was 20 or 30 RSVPs, 20. And as she just stated, by the day before the meeting, or two days before the meeting, there were 100 people in attendance or RSVP'd wanting to come, acknowledge the firefighters. So thank God for social media and Instagram and word of mouth, but I want to acknowledge that firefighter of the year was our recently promoted engineer, Joseph Metzo, who has been with us since the year 2020. It's funny, because when I first met Joe Metzo, he's a tall gentleman, I mean, like 6'6", 6'7", and he had shaved his head. I guess that's a rite of passing when you become a fireman in the department, you shave your head. Some don't even have to go through that, they already don't have hair. But Metzo looked like the actor Bull from Night Court, because he's tall and whatnot in the dark uniform. So I teased him and said, this guy looks like Bull, we pulled him from Night Court. You know, Bull lives on, and that was something that they had already called him, but it was a fun time. Joe has actually come to my house by virtue of calls for service, and has been instrumental in fixing me, if you will. And I owe him and other members of the department some thanks for their professionalism, their quick acting, and their genuine care. So thank you, and Godspeed to Joe Metzo, and he intends to be with us for a long time. Great family, big Italian family that came out to support him. I want to just acknowledge that tonight, my cousin was honored for her 20 years of service in the Navy, and my aunt, who's still in the audience, received her banner earlier this evening. And I want to state that Monique and I were, there's eight of us grandkids, one is no longer with us, passed of COVID in '21, I believe '21 now, right? And Monique, her grandfather's, our grandfather on our mother's side, and her grandfather on her dad's side, both served in the Navy. And I believe my grandfather served in Korea, and I think her other grandfather might have served, same one, Korea. And she decided to continue the tradition, the honorable tradition of serving in the service, but she picked the Navy to honor her grandfathers. Both of her grandfathers are no longer here, so I'm sure they're looking down with pride as she was acknowledged. Monique, if you are still on the call, I doubt it, it's midnight or 1:00 in Texas, but I know time has allowed for us not to keep as close as we should, and you've been busy, but I am very proud of you, you and Bernice, Bernice being one of our youngest who's still in the Air Force, and her banner's still in town, hanging up on Montevista. Our family's very proud. I know Grandpa would be swelling with pride. You served this country with dignity, and what they didn't include in the bio was that you helped save lives in, I believe, Indonesia or someplace in Asia, saving lives, doing surgeries, saving lives, and you are to be commended. And you have a beautiful family, husband and kids, so thank you for your service, Godspeed. I will always be grateful to you, and you made Montclair proud. And then council, if you guys are, if tempers have calmed down up here, I would remind you, I'd still like to take that group council photo for the time capsule that they're allowing us to put at Chino Basin. Thank you.
Councilmember Ru?
Yes, I will try to be short this evening. I was unable to attend the fire recognition as I was at the Gold Line JPA meeting. I am the Secretary Treasurer for the Gold Line JPA, and it was as equal as important to be there to continue the push for funding for the city of Montclair, which I know our fire chief understands that fully, why I had explained to him why I could not be there. I also want to, when we're talking about transit, these are, I'm probably the only one who has them, tap cards for the Metro Gold Line, Green Line, Blue Line, Pink Line, I still call them the old names. And on February 4, MetroLink and the various LA Metro entities will have all of February 4 as the Free Ride Day. It's to celebrate Transit Ridership Day, and that is on the birthday of Rosa Parks. It is to honor her courageous stand on a bus where she refused to take a seat in the back. So there's, theme this year is take a seat anywhere you wish and ride for free. Yesterday was the Dr. Martin Luther King holiday. It is one that I hope everybody spent some time in service to something else, I know I did, and to keep his legacy alive about our community service, civil rights, and equality. And then lastly, just comment on a passing of someone who had a brief, ever-so-brief contact with the city of Montclair and put us on the news. The legendary KNXT reporter Ruth Ashton Taylor passed away at the age of 101. She was a Southern California native, born and reared in Long Beach, California, but she had an encounter with our region for a little, just a little over four years of her life, when she attended Scripps College right next door to us in Clermont. She then went on to Columbia School of Journalism. Fast forward, when Nordstrom opened, she was the reporter assigned to Montclair Nordstrom for the grand opening, and it was quite an event. Somewhere in the deep and distant archives of my photo albums, I have a photo with her, I was there that day, but she was on the news that evening, talking live from Nordstrom in the city of Montclair, talking about the opening of Nordstrom. So just an ever-so-small thread of history connecting us to that time. Thank you.
Okay. By the way, Montclair High School Boys and Girls Soccer and Montclair High School Basketball beat Chaffee today. So for those Chaffee folks, sorry about that. Huh? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.